9:20, 22, and it is 6:31 PM. And I will call the roll. Mayor Protem Villa Lobos.
She been on you?
I don't see her on.
Okay. Councilmember Bunker?
Here.
Councilmember McClabb?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton?
Here.
And Mayor Gleason, I am here. So if y'all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. And if you remain standing for the invocation, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, we just praise you for this beautiful country and for Martindale. And we just praise you for giving us the opportunity to serve. Heavenly Father, we just ask for your guidance in everything we do and say. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we do have a couple of public comments. Don Schultz?
Just an inquiry whether the comments from last week will be considered or not concerning the food court, driveway, defenses, the privacy fence was talked about. Its location was never determined, whether it be on 80 or on River Road, whether the driveway's going to be down halfway, or where you're going to put this at. Is there any conclusion about these subjects?
Well, when we go into the public meeting, we'll kind of discuss that a little bit during the public hearing. The next thing on the agenda, number four.
All right.
Thank you. Steven Onville?
This comment will have any comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll go into the public hearing for the certificate of appropriateness in the scenic corridor for the fire department to start with.
Yeah, so I'll work to get that pulled up. For those who, I'll put it this way, is anybody unfamiliar with the, or did not participate in the prior public hearing regarding the certificate of appropriateness for the fire department? Okay. Here, I'm gonna pull this up. I was ready to go with the other. Ah, here it is. So, let me rotate this page. Ah, come on. Well, Adobe's not cooperating with me right now. It wants me to sign up for a free trial in order to rotate the page. Let me try opening under another program.
Perfect.
And no kidding. I'm so glad that they, they're now charging you to rotate a page. Let me see.
That's Acrobat that was doing that change?
Yep. Here we go. I should be able to do this on. There we go. All right. Sorry about that, everybody. So, the certificate of appropriateness was submitted on behalf of the Emergency Services District Number Three for their new fire station. On the screen, you'll see a elevation drawing, and for those online, I'll share screen here. The elevation drawing depicts the, the look and facade of the building, and from an aerial view, you get a little, another elevation drawing of, of what the project will look like. If, if there's no comments or, or questions from the public, we can move on to the next agenda item under the public hearing. Yes?
How high is this up then, from the height of 80?
In terms of the building height, it is, is...
No, from the road to the front of the building.
The elevation?
The, so it's, the, the, the building is going to be a two-story building.
Right.
The setbacks are quite a ways, 20 feet? If I'm looking at that right?
Is the foundation of the building from the road?
That is something that would be included with the building permit process. And their base, and they would have to maintain their, their bottom floor above the base flood elevation. So whatever that is, base flood elevation plus, I think it's a foot or two feet, that's where their first floor would have to reside.
So, remind me, this is just for aesthetics for the scenic corridor, for us to...
Right. It's, it's for historical, architectural, and cultural continuity within that scenic corridor. What's not fully depicted, at least on this elevation drawing, is the height of the tower, which is going to be quite tall, but that's needed in order for them to be able to have radio communications throughout their, their jurisdiction.
Was it a 100-foot tower?
100-foot tower, yeah.
Hi, are we commenting on it as well, or just the public?
If you have any questions or concerns, I know there's a representative from the Emergency Services District here that could weigh in if there's any other issues, but if there's no other discussion on this, we would move on to the next, the next item.
Did you have a question, Sam?
Well, I, I know that they haven't yet acquired the access to 80, but, but I think with it being a fire department facility and a public service facility, that it wouldn't be much of, I wouldn't think it would be much of a problem to have their driveway access 80, but that's something that'll have to be worked out later in the...
Yeah, and it's not necessarily part of the certificate of appropriateness consideration.
Okay.
You ask a question?
Yeah.
Will be hooked up in the city sewer? Yes.
I believe so, yes. Yeah. And there's, there's a sewer line not too far from there that they'll be able to access. I know the mayor provided some documentation that, that would be made available to them as they went through their, their, I guess, loan process to...
There's, there's an easement on the side of the building that goes back to Northwest River Road, which is where we connect to the sewer.
All right.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll move on. Yes, do you have a question?
We talked about last week about a drainage pit. Where on that drawing would that drainage pit be at?
Pull up the one that has the adjoining properties. The retention pond is actually, if you guys go down, it's going to be down all around. Retention pond is actually at the very lower left-hand corner of there. It's where the detention pond is. The property, lot number one, is the fire station property. It runs through to that detention pond back there. There's a currently, the detention pond is currently in place. We are upgrading it so it will handle the capacity of both lot number one and lot number two.
It's empty right now?
The detention pond? Well, no, it's, it's serving detention needs for lot seven, which are the storage buildings, and lot six, which is Jack Bud's residence.
Right.
And that's, it's on his property that that...
Both of them are, correct.
Yeah, both of, both of those lots, six, six and seven, are both Jack's lots that are feeding that.
Gotcha.
We're, we're in the process, and we just recently have upgraded the detention pond to handle lots one and lots two. We don't own lot two, it's still for sale, but the, the expansion of the detention pond was to handle all four of those properties.
So the detention ponds are dotted line?
Yeah, that's just the upper edge of it. It goes from there towards Northwest River Road, which I think this print cuts off before you get there.
And I assume you communicate with Jack, Amy, on this?
Yes, Jack, Jack has been involved with us in upgrading the detention pond.
You know, just keep him, keep him in the loop.
We're keeping him in the loop.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, are there any more questions about the firehouse? Okay, we'll move on to 1008 Northwest River Road, establishing food trailer.
Yeah, so as, as we discussed at our prior public hearing, this proposed development would include a parking area and a food court of sorts that would be able to accommodate up to four food trucks with a central silo, that would serve as like a beverage station, and then is outfitted with porta potties for, for restroom services. And that's located along State Highway 80 to the north and Northwest River Road to the south of the, the property line.
And you're just going to start with one food truck?
That's, that's what he has of his...
The barbecue one?
Yeah, he, he has one lined up, but he's, he's requesting permission under certificate of appropriateness for up to four.
And they are going to have some kind of a, what, an air-conditioned trailer or something for, can he say with the barbecue pit?
Commissary.
Commissary, yeah.
Well, what he was discussing regarding a commissary is an off-premise location where they would do some of the prep that they aren't, are not able to do within a food truck.
Right, okay.
Jared, is this, is this close to Hermano's?
Yes, so at the southern edge of the bound, of the property line is where it could, it is adjacent to the Hermano's. So this, if I can do that, go. Hermano's would be down here where it says concept plan, conceptual plan?
Where the little cut-over road is?
Well, there, there are some trees there now to keep it from cutting over, but yes. And then on the northwest side is up against the Texaco pack of stack.
So what are they going to do for wastewater?
Well, they are not going to have wastewater access at that location. What they intend to do is to take all their gray water from the food preparation and take it off-site or have somebody come in and remove it and then dispose of it off-site. And then for bathroom services, they have a porta potty service.
So is this in the city limits, or is it...
Yes, this is within our city limits.
I was reading through the city code, and I couldn't find it a second time, but I thought I came across something that said that if you have food trucks in restaurants, then it's like a restaurant and you need to comply with things other than just, in order for that, to comply with the code that I read, porta potties and just single, same food trucks weren't permitted, or?
Then that means that the taco police wouldn't be permitted, because there is no public bathroom at all.
Anyway, I thought I read that there were some rules around food trucks.
There are, or there are regulations regarding food trucks, but I do not recall. I'll, I'll pull up the ordinance right now and see if there's any mention to restroom facilities, but to my knowledge, it does not include those, those requirements.
And there's no restroom inside the food truck?
No.
Did Mr. Martina come in, because we discussed last week about moving the driveway down some? Did he come back and address that with you, God?
No, he did, he did not amend his application.
I don't think that he even had a driveway proposed.
Yeah, they, they were verbally talking about moving it down.
Yeah, but I, I don't think there's anything we can do about that, but he seemed very amenable that he would move it down past the residences.
That's why I kind of asked the question.
Yeah, well, it looks like he had thought it out pretty well.
I had a question about ADA parking. If you're looking into that real quick?
Hi, Sonja.
Hey, I just wanted to say, like, the, the conversation that we're having right now that doesn't have to do with the three things that we're going to be voting on as far as what we're discussing this evening, correct?
Yes. See corridor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this mean the permit's not going to be issued again tonight?
Say thank you.
Does this mean that the permit is not going to be issued again tonight?
No, 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 it's on the agenda to be voted on tonight. But the, the, the discussion is whether, so, under a, under the mobile food operating, mobile food vendors requirements, chapter 114 is what Mari was making reference to. There are regulations that they would have to comply with under those standards.
Will it be required of them?
Yes, in order to have a, a mobile food, so a certificate of appropriateness is essentially for the lot to establish the, the design of the lot. When the food truck goes in, that particular food truck operator would have to comply with the mobile food vendors requirements, which includes an annual permitting process.
Which also means that concrete underneath the food vendor machines or food vendor wagons are going to be established?
The...
According to the code, 114-2?
114-2 requiring a...
A D14-02?
Anything that is required under chapter 114 would apply to this ordinance, or would apply to this...
What we're voting on.
You're going to pass the code, will this be required of the code?
Yes, and that might be something that, as we do the vote tonight in the motion, where, you know, if conditional approval, if, if the city chooses to approve, disapprove, or make a conditional approval, a condition could be made conditioned upon satisfying all the requirements of chapter 114. So if there's, if 114 requires, as you, as you point out, a hard blacktop surface or concrete type surface...
For sanitary purposes.
Yeah, that, that would be something that would have to take place. And to the point about toilet and restroom facilities, if those would be applied, they would have to apply then as well.
Is there some, something in that code about having a handicap parking space?
That's within our zoning. So, under the proposed certificate of appropriateness, under the application, the developers made mention that they were going to provide 20 lots, two of which are for disabled or handicap parkings.
Parking.
Twenty parking spots, two of which would be reserved for handicap.
But in a handicap parking situation, you can't have gravel, though. You've got to have a concrete surface for a handicap parking spaces.
But is that part of this, the thing we're voting on today?
Well, I mean, are we going to okay a gravel parking lot that does not have a surface for, explained surface for handicap parking? That's a, that's an architectural-type situation, I think.
So, I, if, again, if it's a requirement for them to comply under the zoning or building codes or whatever code would apply to, to, you know, American Disabilities Act or whatever it would be.
That would go under the building. It wouldn't be up to get a...
Lisa, do you have any thoughts on this?
So, I just wanted to, for the record, and also for anyone in-house that is not familiar with chapter, and I don't know if I can be heard from over here or not.
Yeah, you're here.
Right there, I'm good, okay. Um, so we do have a chapter, which is 114, and it is titled "Mobile Food Vendors." And this establishment would definitely fall into that category. So, not that you can't read yourself, but you don't, may not have it right in front of you. So, "No person shall operate a mobile food establishment or vend food afoot who doesn't possess a valid or current mobile food establishment permit from the city administrator or designee as provided in the chapter." I'm going to, I'm going to skip around a little bit. "Person seeking the establishment permit from the city administrator or designee shall make application on a form provided." And then it lists, of course, just like your regular application things. And the important parts here. Of course, it talks about this type of food. Also talks about prepackaged dip and versus cooked on-site. Description of any vehicle to be used in the mobile vending operation along license and/or registration vehicle identification number and vehicle license or registered state. A notarized letter on, on the form issued by the state that contains the, the address and food establishment permit number of the central preparation facility required by this chapter. Not right in this part, but somewhere else in this chapter. It talks about how it must be posted, have a very specific place in the window of the actual truck, trailer, whatever you want to call it. So it must be visible like any other food establishment or your barber, quite frankly. If the permit is, okay, that doesn't apply to this one last thing.
There are, there are operation requirements in chapter 114.03 relating to, you know, the type of surface that the, that the facility would have to be on. And makes mention of toilet facilities. We would have to, I'd want to, in the condition, when, when or if the city council chooses to approve this with the condition that the site must comply with chapter 114, these would also apply. The issue of toilet facilities is, and how that paragraph is worded, I'd want to have Kent look at, just given some of the...
It's very clear.
Connected to approved type sewer system.
I, I don't, I don't want to get into a debate on what that paragraph means.
We're just trying to answer the question.
We're just trying to answer the question. So yes, toilet facilities are addressed in chapter 114.
And then also mobile food establishment.
And then, yes, and on the paved surface.
So that does answer what he's concerned about.
And he'll have to have that in order to be able to operate. But there's an order, there's a list of permits that will be required. The certificate of appropriateness for the scenic corridor happens to be number one.
Get the ball rolling.
He can't do anything else, he can't apply for the food. He can't apply for the food permit until he's got a certificate of appropriateness.
Also, as these people have discussed, are citizens about moving the driveway, fence, that kind of thing can be done in the permit process?
Well...
And we're talking about, if we approve this, with this clarification...
It doesn't necessarily mean that in any of the other permit processes, there are several he's going to have to get.
I, I will, based on the size of his fence, he will not, it will not require building permit for the size of his fence. You generally do not need a permit to create a driveways or parking lots or anything like that. So, in turn, the, what he will eventually likely need a building permit for is if toilet facilities, flushable toilet facilities are required at that site, he'll need a building permit for that. And he would probably need a, might need a building permit for the silo, depending on the construction and type and how that's being installed.
I guess my question is how, I mean, they know, like, that both of them discussed he could move the driveway down. Could that be discussed at a later date? Or during, if it will be done?
That's now.
Okay. Unfortunately, it's not here.
In 150, like, 25, 26, 27, that addresses the, in 150.027, it addresses the development standard, so that, that is...
I think if, as you consider the, this, the certificate of appropriateness, it's the architectural, historical, and cultural effect. I think if you're, if you're talking about moving driveways, I don't think we can go to his map and draw where the driveway should be. But if we're trying to maintain a, the cultural sense of that portion of Northwest River Road and maintaining that as a mixed-use and serving both mixed-use and residential, I think you could create a requirement that the driveway shall be no closer than X feet from any residential driveway.
I, I would like to chime in for the council to maybe talk now. This is in G, so the number is 114.03G. The hours of operation of any mobile food establishment operating in a residential area shall be from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. June, July, and August, and until 8:00, the remainder of the year. So I do know that in his application initially, he was 10 to 10 is what he was requesting. So, it would be silly if there was not a condition put on your approval, if, if that's what you so choose, that states approval based on the condition that all requirements in chapter 114 are followed.
Yeah, it, it would make me think that if someone was applying for such a permit as this, that they would have familiarized themselves with this 114.
Never assume anything.
Well, I mean, he, he said, well, I'm going to pump out the gray water, and I'm going to have porta potties and, and all that stuff. I mean, none of that is jiving with this, though, so, but it will. It should, and it will.
This, this application process began almost a year and a half ago. And we're, we're, we're trying to be responsive government to a, to a citizen who submitted an application and considering it. I think when it comes to time to, for the full application of our ordinances on that site, 114 and the building codes, 150 zoning, those design standards setbacks, those are going to all come to play.
And if you don't think that it meets the standards, you don't have to...
Well, or like I said, you can approve based on the visual aspects that it fits into the scenic corridor with the condition that all future permits are met to the T. You, you can say that.
Is there any way we could phrase it, since he did verbally agree to move the driveway, that we could do it in our motion to some language to say the applicant has agreed to move the...
Well, I think what, what, what I would consider is replacing conditions that the, that is approved on the condition that the site complies with all city ordinances, including chapter 114. And that, given consideration to the proximity of residential area, that hours of operation are restricted per chapter 114. And the driveway, the entrances and exits to the establishment are located X feet from any residential driveway.
You, you're good with that? And I was almost thinking in my head, on an agreeable location, you know, the two of you were making...
I, I want to be able to, to, to have it, to have it nailed down. You know, no, no closer than, kind of a, kind of a thought. And if they want to work out what makes it best between neighbors, that's totally within, within that.
Can we look at this schematic drawing again, though? If we look at this schematic drawing again though, does it have a graph of? Well, he's not here, I mean, really. Well, but we, we have to say 50 feet or 40 feet or whatever. I mean, we have to say something apparently.
So. So he does not have measurements on here. But what we can do is use my friend Google. My friend Google will help us out.
He has 20 foot setup on the map.
Yeah, but that's. On Google, work with me. Work with me. There. So if we want to. Just measure distance. So let's see, down by that telephone pole, that's 96 feet. So you can say 100 feet. From the, any residential.
Point your pointer to that.
As you point an area, Clint.
Yeah, so from, from here to there is 96 feet, so.
So can you put either an X or an arrow on where, at the end, at the end of that line, I'm assuming is where the beginning of the driveway would be? Or is that? Or is where you've just drawn?
Or we, you can measure a diagonal if that, if that helps. But it's going to get, the difference between here or here.
My, my point is for the record and for the file, a screenshot of this that would give the proprietor what was the condition.
I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be in the agenda or in the minutes, but.
Excuse me, you don't want the, his driveway, you want his driveway 100 feet from your driveway.
Well.
Yeah. You're gonna have to dis that telephone pole in the middle.
Yeah, it's a telephone pole.
So you're saying start it at the telephone pole and go toward the monos.
Yeah. I know in front of my house to the.
That makes the motion much more difficult. I, I, I think simply stating 100 feet from any, from any residential driveway.
Yeah, because he, he can make.
And then he can make it 150 if he wants it to. But.
That's not great, Jared.
Okay.
I agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he, he could make a left turn just before the bowl and, and then go, go in that direction.
Uh, it's, that's a, that's just marking how far, if I took this and drove it, you know, longer, you can still hash it out of. Where you're looking is down here for your total distance. Okay.
So if the concern also about drainage and having a pipe or an apron, all, all, all that comes out later. As far as an engineer type driveway entrance is concerned, that, that all comes out later.
There, there.
Well, there, no, I'm talking about off of Northwest Road. But you say there's no permit needed for a driveway.
No. Fences, fences seven feet or less and driveways that are less than, I think, 30 inches or something above grade do not, do not need a building permit.
Driveway 100 feet from residential driveways at the time of building. He doesn't have to move it whenever somebody builds a new house.
That's a good point, yeah.
Say that again.
Yeah, but basically if someone.
That he builds his place. If another house gets built and it's happens to be closer to the driveway, he doesn't have to move his driveway. Yes.
Okay, I agree, that sounds good.
What about the culvert underneath the drive, will it be a culvert?
That's gonna be a building, that's gonna be a building permit.
Well.
Barra department has to have that, wouldn't he have to have that?
It, it, it depends on the applicability of chapter 114 that would require a permanently paved surface or any other disability type requirements to council member Clinton's point that would require a impervialble surface or something like this. If those, if those requirements, if, if those things require stormwater management as part of their engineering or, or something, then that, that would have to take place. And that would, believe is covered either under our building codes or our zoning codes, under design criteria. What's that?
Wouldn't that be under the US waterways?
Possibly.
You know, to.
Possibly.
Let the drainage flow, I'd say, back right up, it'll never.
Do you have a culvert?
No, because the.
And the water backs up?
Before we got there, you know.
And the water backs up?
No.
Now?
I applied more rocks to stay on the road and run down the face of the roads. Like they established before I got there.
I think that'd be part of engineering.
I mean, we almost have a, in that location. Our, our roads are oh so bad, they almost act as culverts.
Where the driveway is yet. Yeah. We can't be designing this.
I, I agree with that. That's fine, that's fine. That could be done in the permitting process or something.
Yeah.
You mentioned like level two wastewater in New Orleans.
So under, under chapter 114 to remember Maury's point, there is reference to toilet facilities. My quick read of, of that paragraph is, might be open to some interpretation that we'd want our city attorney to, to look at after the fact. But if toilet facilities were required, he would have, either have to apply for a onsite sewer or septic system or connect to city sewer. Connection to the city sewer is, is gonna be a little bit of a difficult prospect, given that location, because he'll almost, he'll need a lift station or some sort of boost to get it back up over the hill and to get it to where Jack Mudd's property is basically where it ends now.
Oh, is that the last, that's the last sewer hook up is at Jack Mudd's?
Yeah. Or he would, and, or he'd have to try to, or on her highway and get over a sky view. But I think you're going to be dealing with elevation issues going that direction and. Yeah, it's, it, it would be, be a pretty, a pretty expense, expensive proposition. Well, it depends on the, how the interpretation of that, of that particular paragraph.
It is, I agree, the attorney needs to look at it, so.
Which one is off the border?
It's.
So he's hooked up to the.
That's the toilet.
Motor heating device?
It's rated, it's rated again, is this.
Can we bring that up again? I think getting the attorney to read it, I've read it about eight times and I can't make sense of it.
Can we get it, can we, can we get it back on the screen again?
Hold on a second.
Yeah, but, but it's, but the problem is.
I agree, Morris is, is saying.
Has access to approved flush toilets, they do not.
So, so it's, it's, it's a little confusing.
Requirements generally.
The other thing that will come into play is that.
You're breaking up, Sonia.
What she's saying is there's a lot of conversations and she's unsure what the conversation is being had. So Lisa, you were, you were saying?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make, make a point that as part of a different code that I cannot call. Gentlemen, please, um, that if in fact a development is three hundred feet or less to our wastewater lines, they are required to hook up.
Well, that, that, that wouldn't be this case, he's almost a quarter mile away.
So that's not this case.
Mr. Clinton, there's no, they're, they're on second tank at that second back, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, well, with Jack Mudd's, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, he, most. He could connect to our sewer system. The costs are probably going to be pretty high or he would have to apply for, going through the county's process to get onsite sewage facility, a septic tank.
I guess we could ask Bud if we could say in the future.
I don't know if we'll need to address that here.
Just leave it like it is.
What's, what's going to happen is the, the interpretation and applicability of that question within our ordinance would, 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 would be addressed by Bud and then.
Got it, great.
We'd, we'd take action from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, I have one here.
Will he do that off the river road to pump the sewage out of the?
The, the, the question was, I think, recall, you're referring to the porta potty services. Yeah, the question was, would, would he be, would the property owner be required to or would he possibly service his porta potties off of Northwest Road? I don't know. I, I, I don't know if we can really dictate that. I think if there's, if there's a.
I'm sure there's a timely way to do it, like when they go with your trash. Because I'm sure there's a cycle that they, they have to probably.
Yeah, if we ran into an issue where they're, where they're impeding traffic and it became a safety issue, we could, we could address it then as well, I'm sure.
Could you put that verbiage up there one more time, just for my, just for me to read it again? See, all my, my attorney put.
Oh, yes.
You do have a engineer here now too.
If I have this much problems, I'm just felt that you don't, you're not ready to okay it.
It says too, he didn't have flush toilets, he has porta gans. You know, so it's not a flush toilet.
So is the bathhouse flushable with taco, a happy taco?
They have a toilet there.
They have a toilet.
I really write each and one.
Got that verbiage written down here.
Follow the requirements for 114 and be within 100 feet of the tra, of residential driveway.
Depends which, which turn you have.
Mary.
All right.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the public, comments on, public on, on this agenda item? All right. Yeah.
I was gonna ask about possibly getting a privacy fence. Put up and if it's not appropriate to ask it today, is there enough time to ask it?
As a condition for approval of this, that would be the time if you're asking for that to be a condition of the approval of the certificate of appropriateness. If you're asking that of city council now at the time. If you're asking of the homeowner or the property owner, you can talk to your neighbor any day you want that, and try to ask him to do it.
You can make him do your privacy thing.
I don't know, probably.
You can, and I'm, I'm curious on your thoughts in regards to it not being part of the building permit process versus the C of A.
So any, any fence that's, that is not within a site triangle of an entrance or exit driveway type scenario. If it's, if it's less than seven feet, it, it does not require a building permit, you can just do it. So, um, under certificate appropriateness, he, he is required, the property owner was required to submit a visual representation of the construction materials that he intends to use on his site. He provided a picture of what the fencing materials were going to look like for approval. So.
The whole food court is fenced.
It is fenced, but it, but it is not, but it is not obstructed at like a privacy fence.
Right, and, and I would think as a business that they would want to have some visibility that, oh, something is fear for customers. You know, I can understand having the privacy fence on Highway 80. But, you know, we kind of want these people to succeed in their business.
But he didn't, he, off my memory, he did not really agree, he didn't really want to put a privacy fence.
No.
Well, yes, that was a, yeah, he wanted partial visibility, you can see, some of it's gonna be.
And then he did have.
That was eight feet tall or whatever the requirement.
The, the.
Then that would probably still, I think, be a little.
The porta potties were going to be fully screened.
Behind a privacy fence.
Behind a privacy fence.
Just a question, what if, what if, what if there was a privacy fence in front of your driveway? And then it went into the aesthetically pleasing, fits the area type fence?
Well, that would, I mean, that's something.
It doesn't.
It's just that there's a, you know, when people get to talking and everything, it, it, they get loud. And sooner or later, he's gonna probably have alcohol there and people's voices kind of rise when they drink. Um, and I got two bedrooms upstairs that are really more designed for children than like the master bedroom upstairs. Um, I, I, I'm just thinking of the house, you know? Not us, but even the next people that will own the house. I mean, the house is really old and we've done an awful lot to refurbish it. I mean, the year it was built was the year President Lincoln was assassinated, 1865. Um, and it's been there. And, um, I kind of feel like the people that are living next door to the fire department, they're getting a privacy fence, um, uh, kind of thing. And yet this house that's been there for centuries now, um, yeah, I, that's just kind of my feeling.
Is your property, is your property zoned in the MU district or is it?
No, she's, she's zoned residential, he's zoned mixed use.
Okay, there is a provision. I need to do a little bit of digging. I know if commercial builds next to R1 residential, it is a requirement in the building process that they do provide a privacy fence between the commercial area and the residential.
But I think that's in a adjoining properties.
I, I, I think this applies.
We'll look into it. Well, I mean, because what will be, what we propose the motion to be is any, any and all applicable ordinances. So if there's an applicable ordinance within the zoning, that would set that design criteria then.
Put the smaller fence on the side of Highway 80 for visibility. I kind of thought he was gonna use Highway 80 for visibility so that anyone driving by could stop.
But they can't enter from Highway 80. They have to enter from Northwest River Road.
Until he gets a permit to do it.
So he gets that from.
I think it's time to.
Unless there's public comments, but.
Yeah, if there's public comments, we're actually.
Unless there's any more public comments, but if we, you can table the discussion with the council, but if there's comments, probably. Unless there's any more public comments, but if we, you can table the discussion with the council, but if there's comments, probably have to hear it. Any other comments from public on this one? All right. Now, 408, that's not, that, that has been rescheduled and not discussed for tonight. Yeah, 408 Lockhart. I'll be, now we table.
Okay, so we're going to move on to new business. We are going to elect a vice chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I believe it needs to be Jan or Sam, because Mike is the chair.
I think Jan had expressed that she wanted to.
Yeah, please try for you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I make a motion that Jan Bunker is going to be, or should be elected the vice chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second. And Sonia, second. So we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that, we'll move on to number two. Certificate of appropriateness, and the first one is for the fire department. Is there a motion to accept the seating corridor application for the fire department building?
I make a motion that we, we accept the certificate of appropriate appropriateness application for the ESD number three fire department building in Martindale along Highway 80.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
The only thing I wanted to include would be, the lighting hadn't been discussed yet, and as it pertains to the dark sky ordinance, that's all. That's-
We thought we did discuss that.
No, they hadn't finalized the lighting around the building.
Well, all, all the engineering and design work still has to be done, but as far as whatever, whatever the ordinance says we can do, we can't work in the dark, but whatever it says that we need to do as far as, you know, normalize it down, whatever, we absolutely-
If the council so chooses to take the resolution that was adopted ish ago and turn it into an ordinance, then if that happens prior to permitting, it would be required.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good point.
Any more discussion?
Whatever, whatever it is.
Have we fully adopted the dark sky ordinance?
No. We, we have a draft that I've been working on. There, there's a resolution that's in place, but there is a draft ordinance that has been discussed using different model cities as, as a potential starting point.
And it's almost workshop worthy, but just for the public and anyone else's knowledge, the difference between a resolution and an ordinance is that a resolution is a suggestion. Uh, we would like for you to, but once it turns it into an ordinance, it is required.
We, we currently have an ordinance on this issue. All right, we'll, we'll catch up with you, Lee, and we'll, we'll use yours as a model, maybe.
That was, that was me, Russ.
Yeah.
Oh, our new building.
Welcome.
Thanks, Lee.
We do have a-
Yes, sir. No, no, wait, 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 he was referencing, he lives in a nearby city, Lowling.
Oh.
And he was referencing- No, Martindale, Martindale 155 dot zero six one states, in Martindale, all lighting shall be shielded so that the light, all emitted light falls within the property line of the property from which the light originates. All exterior building floodlights shall be shielded so that all emitted light falls within the property from which the light emits. 155 dot zero six one. Yeah.
However, however, Lee, there is a difference between what you just stated, which thank you very much, and what is now being referenced as dark sky. There are, there are a few differences.
Okay, Bill already said he would comply to whatever we said.
Addressing Sam's comment or concern.
Well, I mean, I can't ask him to do that yet, but it seems like with the 155 ordinance, that-
We, that's a, it would apply, and to, to Lee's point, which is a good one. That, 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 there, there are restrictions on the type of lighting, but the dark sky ordinance, to Lee's point, is going to be a lot more technical in nature and provide additional requirements that would be placed on them.
But how can we make him apply to that if the ordinance-
He doesn't have to apply to it now. He applies to it once the building permits are submitted.
We need to get busy. We need to put it on the agenda item. How about that?
For, for example.
You've done, you've seen the ordinance.
Yes.
What, what we just discussed?
Because I'm trying to think if we need to have a variance or a specific exception or nothing, but I'm accepting it as it is, based on what Lee just told us.
Thank you.
And I'm accepting it.
And we will give a dark sky ordinance, too.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam, how do you vote? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move on to 1008 Northwest River Road.
Thank you, council.
Yes, sir.
You're mighty welcome, sir. Thanks for building the fire station.
We're working on it.
How many tickets you got left?
Uh, a lot. How many you want?
I've already bought 10.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on Sunday, right?
Oh, Bill.
Saturday.
I've got some. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Hamilton, can you come back here? Would you just announce your fundraiser for our public to hear?
Uh, the fundraiser, I don't, I'm not the-
Don't look at the camera.
No, no, you're, you're fine. You don't need to turn around.
My makeup look good?
Yes.
The fundraiser is April the 3rd, Sunday. Help me out here.
Three to seven.
Yeah.
Three to seven, three to seven, in the gymnasium at the school. It's $15 a plate. We'd love to see a lot of people there. They've done a lot of work. We've got more food than you can possibly eat donated. We've gotten a lot of money donated. We're looking forward to doing this. This helps the fire department do extra things that are not covered in the support, the financial support that the ESD provides for them, so.
Are they having auctions?
They're having silent auction, yeah, not live auction, but they're, they'll work on it. It might be a live auction coming up later on.
And there's free beer if you eat on site. You can't take it off of site.
No, to-go beer, so.
What's on the menu?
Good to know.
Uh, they got brisket, they got ribs, they got sides, barbecue. Riley's BBQ in Lockhart is doing all the cooking.
That's a deal. You couldn't even buy that at a restaurant.
I'm telling you, it's a good deal. It is a good deal, and it's for a good cause.
I agree.
It's almost 100% profit for the fire department, too, so. Because everything's donated, we've got cash donations, in addition to all food and so, so forth, so. Great cheer, baby. We got live music. A local guy, he made, Mark Young.
Oh, he's good.
Mark, Mark will be there, so it's all good.
It'd be a party.
Thank you for sharing, that is-
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
It's Mark Young.
Joe Potter.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to 1008 Northwest River Road.
Oh, uh, yes, I make a motion to approve the item number 2B at 1008 Northwest River Road with following conditions. That the driveway must be up to 100 feet from the residential driveway on either-
No, no closer to 100 feet.
No, yeah. No closer. Should be up to.
From, with the following conditions. The driveway must be 100 feet from any residential driveway on either side of the road. Also, all, they must comply with all city ordinances and applicable laws and requirements of, yes, the chapter 114 dot 003, and it's entirely for the mobile food vendors located near residential areas. Sound right?
Yes.
Okay, I have a moment. Is there a second?
I have my question.
Well, question, a discussion comes after the second. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay, now is there any more discussion?
Are we going to put something up first to have our attorney look at?
That's going to happen part of the process, the mobile food vendor permitting process.
Make sure that they comply with all the city ordinances and-
Well, and to look at that one.
Laws and requirements of chapter-
I, I think that could be a separate motion, or, yeah, separate motion, so that would be not related to necessarily the approval of this, but an additional direction given to this, to the city attorney to, you know, I make a motion that the city attorney research.
So should we pass this first?
I would.
And-
If, if it's up to the, I mean, it's up to the council, but I recommend-
You can make a second motion.
So no, nothing about the fence and expanding the fence? Oh, we were going to check the ordinance in the city of commercial versus R1.
And they have to follow.
Touching interfacings.
But for now, it's the 100.
The driveway. Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to motion in a second?
Okay, so Mike, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. Now, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that our attorney clarifies the verbiage and-
Chapter 114 03 relating to toilet facilities.
14 03 dealing with verbiage and flush toilets.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, Lee, are you still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you are familiar with?
Well, well, hold on. What, what we're talking about is, is a legal interpretation.
Legal interpretation.
Of an ordinance.
Thanks, Lee. You bet. Sorry.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Sam, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Sonia, how do you vote? Okay, so the motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, you seconded it.
Did I?
Yeah.
You seconded.
Okay, we have one more item to discuss. Yeah, she-
No, 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 she, Sonia seconded the prior motion. She did not second this one.
Seconded this one. To me, Sonia. We had no-
Oh, I thought Jan seconded this one.
We haven't got, you're on it, dude. We hadn't heard from Sonia, you're right.
What did he say?
So, there are two motions under this agenda item. The first motion was made by, by Jan and seconded by Sonia.
Okay.
The second motion was made by Mike, seconded by Jan.
Okay, okay.
So we have not gotten a vote yet from Sonia.
Oh, I thought she said that she texted in.
Uh, yes, I'm a yes. I'm a yes.
Thank you, Sonia. So the motion carries. Okay, we have one more item, and that is hours of operation. We'd like to open up on Friday the city offices, so we will be open five days a week. And what is your preference?
What? So this is something the staff has decided, right?
Yes.
So it's not, okay.
So we don't have to make a motion, it's just-
Well, yeah, it's a discussion, it, it, it involves money. It's about $7,000 a year to open that extra day for the extra utility clerk.
And have you talked to the accountant to see if we can afford it?
So what would likely happen is, when we did our rate structures and budget setting last summer, we, there were some rate increases to keep on customers, sewer customers, that helped us afford a higher wage for our utility clerk. This is another personnel cost that would have to find some way to fund. My recommendation is that we had fund this increased personnel cost by taking funding out of our maintenance budget and using it towards this oper, this, the maintenance of the sewer system. So, and so, that maintenance of the sewer system refers to if we have an emergency shut-off or a pump gets ragged up, routine cleanings or whatever, the lift stations, mowing at the wastewater treatment facility, and other routine operations and maintenance activities that our service provider does for the city.
Because we're currently under budget in that area?
The-
I'm not hard to believe.
So, we have not, we have delayed spending in, in that area as we've received this ARPA funds. And one of the, one of the questions that I'm working, working through is any sort of infrastructure type of work does require the oversight of an engineer. Some, some, the, the funding that we're going to use for ARPA, that we're going to use ARPA funds, to, yeah, $300,000. So basically, bucket of money from, from the federal government would be used to, for maintenance activities. So, so we might not spend as much of our budget and money on maintenance activities, and then we'll pass some of those maintenance savings, cost avoidance, into a personnel line item for the additional utility clerk. On the general fund side, we shouldn't, should not expect any appreciable difference, because prior to this change, full-time staff, that were full-time, were already working 40-hour work week. They're just doing a condensed four-day work week. They're doing 10 hours a day. So instead of, so now we're doing five eights. And so there really wouldn't be on the general fund side, yeah, the, in the utility fund.
Can you, can you explain the problems you're having?
Well, most of us are down here on Friday anyway, in the dark, trying to pretend that we're not here.
That's a good answer. Good answer to the question.
And then people have to put their utility payments in the little box, and we feel like, ah, we're not really here.
Thanks for that explanation.
So now we'll just be, have the lights on and we'll be open.
And have the sign turned.
Yeah.
Okay, but I make a motion, we approve the, what? I make a motion that we approve the hours-
Opening five days a week.
Five days a week.
I'll second.
There you go, Sonia. You beat me to it again.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
You've explained it thoroughly.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Is there anything that you would like to add to the future items list? If not, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
What about making a resolution, a ordinance for a dark sky?
Okay, we'll add dark sky on here?
No, we haven't.
Yes, remember, we have a copy of the-
It's two, we didn't adopt it.
There was a huge one from Blanco, and where was the other one from? From-
Remember Lee, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else to add to future items? I did want to mention, we're having kite day on April the 9th. Library is, just don't forget that one. Okay, if there's a motion for adjournment, we'll take a, what, a five-minute break?
I think we-
Or just go right into it?
That's the council.
Need a cigarette?
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, I'm.
A second.
Who made the motion?
You made a motion, did she make a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
For ten minutes. You want a ten-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. And Mike, uh, seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll reconvene in nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
Oh, I did.
Has been receiving the related future infrastructure requirements. That those potential developments would would need and possible potential course of actions. To to meet that infrastructure demand. At the end of tonight's discussion. I I hope to come away with some direction from city council. For the city staff to to focus our energies. What courses of action? Do you want us to take relating to our our infrastructure needs in the future? Not that we have to make a decision. We're not deciding contracts or. Or committing ourselves to only one of these options tonight, but what I do want to do is. Spend our time, energy and focus pursuing one or more of these paths. So that we we have, you know, some some buy-ins consensus and we don't spend our time. It makes us more efficient when we're talking with developers about. Here's what the city council desires and here's what we're doing to meet that desire. So and and as we get into development agreements. Uh, I just want to kind of set the set the stage why why we're having this discussion. The importance of this discussion as, I mean, we live, all of us, we live this every day, right? We know. That in our region is booming. It's been booming for a while, but it continues to boom faster than anywhere else. The top fifteen growing metropolitan areas, number one, Austin Round Rock. And I think it was number nine or number seven was Austin or San San Antonio, New Braunfels. We're 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 right in the middle of it, right? You can see kind of from that heat map, the the population densities as they exist in 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 the census. Those more of the beige colors where your rural areas are and then spreading out. San Marcos, as you can see, is already creeping into the growth in San Marcos and Kyle's already creeping towards us. Crossing Old Bastrop Road and heading our way and. Being prepared for that future is is what we're about. So what's that future look like? This, the map on the left is a map put together by the Capital Area Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization, Campo. They are heavily involved in infrastructure-related roads, particularly transportation-related. Long-term strategic visions and plans. So they do some data analysis. The areas that you see on their map are where they see the the greatest. Num- population growth within their. Traffic analysis zones. So it's not cities or county, but that's why weird shapes. We're not in the heat of it of Austin. But there you can see down this southern crescent, if you will, of the lower southern Austin metropolitan region. It's, it will continue to grow. Beuta would be right about in here. Beutis at the north end of Hayes County, right? So we ride out there. Yeah, this is Hay Hayes Caldwell and Bastrop County. The charts on the right hand of the screen include incorporate Guadalupe County, which for. Regional planning organizations, that's considered part of the San Antonio's. The 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 feature I wanted, it's a little bit difficult to see, but you can see this growth line is is pretty steep. We're here. Um, in twenty twenty-two with, and this isn't population, this is households, right? So you can think of it as almost homes. Two hundred thousand total households within those counties. And twenty years. It's it's been, it'll get close to doubling based off of the demographic data that the state of Texas. Uses for their population and household projections. So. A lot of that you'll see is is centralized in Hayes County. In their twenty eighteen projections and Guadalupe County, but. As as we've noticed in news media and others, there's a. And what we're seeing for ourselves and the sheer number of development inquiries and applications we're receiving. The blue line for or the orange line for Caldwell County is probably going to be going up as well as as more. Industry particularly comes to town with jobs and and then housing needs. And other high-tech sector investments are happening within our region. You know, Tesla being the major one that's up north, but there's been. You know, discussions about how that might impact development within the Caldwell County area. Martin Dell's area.
But the Caldwell County, the orange line looks almost flat.
It looks almost flat. I wouldn't necessarily believe it. Yeah, I that. The data that they were using, these projections were based off of the American Community Surveys. Prior to the census, so some of the census data might might have. More and would have otherwise informed these projections a little bit more. But even if Hayes Hayes County is, you know, taken out like a rocket ship. As Martindale is right on that edge, right? You know, all of Caldwell County. You know. There's a lot of rural areas out, you know, north of lowing out towards Dale, right? Not are they going to see the same growth that Martindale is going to get? No, I think since our location is central between Long State Highway eighty. One forty-two heading to Lockhart and a nearly adjacent to the toll roads. Those are going to be significant arterial areas where growth will will probably happen here more so than other areas in the county. So that's that's where we're, that's where we're at from a regional standpoint. Now. Narrowed down into our neck of the woods. So this chart is a notional. Illustrative. Depiction of where we're seeing demand in development, you know, either we received applications or inquiries. Or there's other projects that we're aware of that that has interest. So at the, on the furthest right. Or east and south, you see the orange area that would be where basically where Cherryville is as an example. And then where we have development agreements in place with a developer. Right here in in central part of town that was initially signed in twenty thirteen and was updated in, I think, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And that application is continuing. We've received other applications and inquiries in those areas that you see highlighted in yellow. Compare those with the purple of the city limits of Martindale. In terms of just land volume that we're talking about, it is significant. Uh, not saying that all this is going to be homes or businesses or what have you, but if it if that becomes entirely built out. It will have a significant impact on. On Martindale. And that's and. Without. Planning for that infrastructure, without being engaged in development agreements with these developers. And with these with these developments happening outside of our corporate city limits. They're in our ETJ, sure, but outside our corporate centers. If we're not engaged in that process, this growth will happen to us. Not for us. And 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 what I mean by that is. We need to be able to be in position where as we get into development agreements, which. I think most of city councils familiar with that process, but if I'm speaking out of turn on that, we can slow it down and discuss what that is. And how it's used, but the development agreement is one of the few tools that the city has. As developers come in, they need services from the city. We can provide services and under that agreement. You know, we can consider things like annexation or other. Design criteria and and basically runs a whole gamut of what might happen. Uh, within those development. Areas. So if we don't enter into development agreements with these developers because we're not providing services and. They don't have a a need to come to us for development, as long as they comply with our subdivision regulations that. Applied to the ETJ. They can pretty much do what they want in a lot of respects. I don't know, Tom, if you have any comments on that discussion, but.
That's very true. Yeah, I'm Tom Turk. I'm with Freeland Turk Engineering Group, I'm a city engineer.
I I asked him to to help along with Lisa, who's our our economic development coordinator and Tom and. I wanted to bring him on to, and we also have Lee on the line, our building official. To to help support this this discussion if questions come up, because, you know. Done some research, but this man has lived it in his in his career, uh, being a city engineer for for many years. So.
What Jared said about development in the ETJ is is correct. Your subdivision ordinance applies in the ETJ. They must comply. As long as they do comply, you have you have clearly no choice but to approve their developments. Uh, and they don't become part of the city. They just remain in your ETJ. And I'm sure you all know that. Uh, the law as it sits today, uh, you cannot annex anybody without their consent. I mean, there's a lot of. Legal stuff, because a lot of, but fundamentally, you have to volunteer to come into a city. And so. The problem that I see brewing here is that you have development that's going to occur in your ETJ around your city. And if they don't come into the city, then you're basically going to experience all of all the problems that come with development. With with no tax revenue to deal with. I I did a lot of work in the city of Laverne. They had a very similar problem. They had a small city. Was a center, a lot of people came to Laverne and left. There was a lot of growth around it. And they had very little means to to. Deal with a lot of the problems because they just didn't have the revenue and they couldn't make people come into the city. So I kind of see that problem starting to.
Especially once the subdivisions are established.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
In dealing with Laverne, as you've just described, what would be? Two, three things that you would say if they would have done this, this and this, it would have been different.
As it sits today, uh, cities, the 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 leverage the cities now have. Is with their utility systems. That's that's fundamental leverage they now have to get. Folks to come into the city, be annexed.
And those are utilities that the city either owns or contracts with, is that correct? So that's not like Specter.
Yes. The city sewer.
Yeah, which it gets to a point that we've discussed with council before. You know, not, we have the, we cooperate with our wastewater service corporation. We have their general manager, Stephen Baumville's here. So if I say something out of turn, Stephen, smack me down, correct me, but not having. Being limited to only one utility service. Reduces our negotiating position significantly, which is one of the reasons why I've discussed with council. If we can, let's try to pursue a merger consolidation if we can with the water supply corporation. They they have a greater ability to negotiate these things and we'll get to. The maps and how that all works in the future, but. One of the focuses as we're going to get into this conversation later tonight is going to be specifically on wastewater because to Tom's point. That's the only, you know, utility service that we provide. In the city and it and it's a pretty small service that we provide as it exists today and we'll get into that.
And so what would be number two?
Vote for agreements. That's probably the most versatile tool that you have as a city. To come to terms with a developer so that. You get what you need and they get what they want.
Okay, number three, thank you. You're awesome.
Just the foresight and the awareness of. What is coming? There's, you know, there's. You can take the position of of do nothing or very little. Uh, and it's got some advantages and disadvantages, or you could be proactive. And know the development developing is coming like Jerry put it very well, you know. It it may it may occur despite you.
So clarification, so if a developer comes during ETJ, we have to offer them a service, a utility and. All we have at this point is the wastewater at this point, am I correct? Unless we have the.
Well, the developer does not have to enter into a development agreement. That what we we encourage them to enter in development agreements with us. And then what that development agreement looks like. In one of, in chapter one fifty-six, which our our code of ordinances applies to development agreements. Part of that agreement is an exchange of services. You know, so what we're talking about, the main service is utility services, but you can you provide other services, but we don't have a fire department. You know, we could provide a solid waste service through our. Yep, and and we only, we have half of that. As that exists and it's a pretty small, tiny little.
And just for the council, if you want to jot down on your notes, chapter fifty-six. Thank you. I did misspeak. Chapter one fifty-six, development agreements for projects in the ETJ. Is what you would want to.
And unless there's anything else to Lisa's comment, I'll I'll go on to the next slide.
So we talked about. If they comply with, is it subdivision or subdivision regulation? So are there regulations that we should add or modify? To our to our existing subdivision agreements that could put the city in a better position?
It'd be difficult to do so. So. Yeah, the the state law is going to come to play with with some of that. They they. The climate in which the city operates, all cities across Texas, is. Assume that the state legislature doesn't like you or anything that you do and they want to make your life difficult in trying to. Expand. Either in terms of number or quality, the services that you provide. Examples are recently passed rules relating to annexation. The city cannot annex land unless it owns it. Or it's put on a ballot and the voters annex themselves in. Or the only really that other than that is for the owners to annex themselves in through a development agreement. Before the development starts, really, or to to set the conditions in which that annexation would happen. You know, you know, through a phased development or however that works. Each each development agreement you look at is going to be different. But as it relates to regulations that can be applied to the ETJ, they're very few, they're pretty constricted. The subdivision regulations really come down to, you know, lot sizes and roads and and very. Engineering drawing type type of, you know, plating and plotting out your 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 land. So. There's not a lot there that would dictate other than how the streets are constructed. I I I haven't, I haven't researched that issue to the.
Our actual subdivision ordinance. We we follow all of the current international building codes. And every subdivision or replat is reviewed by our city engineer and.
For that for that purpose.
For that purpose and he is the one who determines if this development and or replat. If if it meets all requirements.
But as an example, we've we've done, we've done subdivisions. Within the Martindale Falls area. And Martindale Falls is not part of Martindale. They might use our services, but they're not paying into the into.
But what we're seeing is it's not what we see before.
This is not one or two, three or four houses. This is thousands of rooftops.
I'll say the largest subdivision flat that I've done in fifteen years was phase three. Of San Marcos River Ranch and it was seven lots.
So do we have a a restriction on the size of the lot?
We can get into that if you want to on a separate. Discussion, but I I want to focus. Yeah, we keep, if if you're curious to learn, we can get into it, but I want to, I don't want to focus on that tonight.
Okay, we'll continue.
This is, so. In my mind, when I go to bed at night, I see basically this map and I say to myself, how? Are we going to and not put our the city in a position of. Being quite literally trampled by development, either in our roads. And our services and and our, you know, community and and what happens there. So that's what tonight tries to get to.
Can you tell us about the acquisitions? One of them is Cherryville.
I don't want to get into the particular app, the nature of the applications. The 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 color distinction here are where we've received discreet development applications. Or very discreet inquiries. The items in orange are those that the city is aware of. That could have a significant impact on the city and. Maybe associated one way or another with other development applications or inquiries that we've received.
Alright, continue on.
Um, so speaking of roads, this was a arterial road study. That Campo put together based off of what they saw in twenty twenty. This area within Martindale, I think we, you you probably see this fill this every day already being the president here. As you start moving along Highway eighty towards San Marcos, it becomes quite congested and ball-necked. One forty-two, that that congestion is growing and there are certain ball-necks as you get into Lockhart. That's that's today. Imagine what that looks like with another few thousand rooftops of homes. Yeah, add one ten, it's common.
I've seen another alignment where they have a new road.
Yeah, there's there's some, there's a study that Campo is doing right now. Um, they're in the process of of completing that study specifically for Caldwell County. And in that they're they're looking at some sort of connection. To basically get to I thirty-five north of Martindale. In some way to relieve congestion on eighty and to improve the 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 corridor between Lockhart and and I thirty-five. And so they're they're they have, there's proposals out there. If you, if residents, city council members are interested in what that is, we can get you clued into Campo and when they're having public hearings and things, but. To this point, they. They haven't touched Martindale too much yet.
Kind of goes halfway between Ewing and Martindale.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it tries to get over onto Yon Yonington Road, yeah, one fifty.
It'll come down William Pettis Road and then it loops kind of around the.
Oh, there's a lot of work being done there, but development happening, I don't think that one road is going to. It's going to help, but it probably won't do a whole lot for. For us. And that's on that arterial road. So as you get into the, you know, city. Especially as the downtown core becomes an attraction, it already is. You come down here. On the weekend, this place is booming and it's happening. This is a place to be. Imagine if you put another thousand homes and they all want to be down here too. You want to have Green Hall in Martindale. Um, with, you know, have to have a sheriff's officer on every corner trying to make sure people don't get run over. Um, if we're if we're not, so although roads and things are an issue at this level. Even if the development happens outside of cities, can we talk about if it happens to us? Without the ability of the revenue through annexation, other means. There's, there's no way that we can react to it. Um, or plan for it.
Eighty is being widened though.
Is it?
I heard that, I mean.
Maybe. Yeah, I I know they've been hesitant to do that in the past, but they they could be considering it with the. Oh, that's good. I I wasn't aware of that, so that's good. The comment was the roads being wide between. Um, old Bastrop twenty-one and nineteen eighty-four, which is just on the edge of of the city. Alright, so other infrastructure, water. I don't want to spend too much time on it because, well, it's. Our place, but I do want to give a a sense of. As development's happening, it's going to happen across three different water supply corporations. Again, these maps are notional illustrative. Don't consider these, you know, the defined boundaries by any means. It's. Me drawing on a. On PowerPoint to try to get a close approximation. So. There are developments that are going to cross one or more of of these water supply corporations at. At each turn. The Water Supply Corporations, they have their own contracts. Beyond just their own wells and things that they operate. They have contracts for surface water with other regional water authorities. As I understand it today, Steve, that you you probably had can accommodate another thousand homes or so and we'll get get to that. The development we're looking at, that's more than that. So that's going to put a burden on the water supply corporations. Maxwell Water Supply Corporation, Martindale, possibly crystal clear to to find. That water supply. I think it's it can, it's probably out there. Might be a little expensive, but it's probably out there. Any questions? Steve, anything I said that needed correct for the record? Alright. Our wastewater system. So this is a a map of our system. It's it's somewhat difficult to to read. But I'll I'll try to point out as best I can. These dark black lines. Those are the the city's existing sewer system. The wastewater treatment plant, if this was on the the picture, would be off screen. Um, but the sewer system is essentially this historic downtown core. And out Northwest River Road, there are a few homes that are connected. This map is from two thousand and seven, so it doesn't have the latest. Edition that we made in twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, uh, for a few homes in the Skyview Skyline subdivision. And then it has, you know, near the Martindale Apartments. That's it. Well, if if you consider where those development agreements are happening, they're all on. Access to Highway eighty where our sewer system is not. So not only as we get talking to. Later wastewater treatment plant capacity, it's also sewer infrastructure as well. Is is going to be a a significant burden. For either a developer or the city to to provide. And and questions on this one?
You said you would talk about the capacity later?
Talk about it right now. How about that? So, um, this chart is using a table that was. Put together, part of a study that was done under. Previous development agreement. Uh, and there was a hired engineering firm that that put this together. The. The top table describes what their assessed capacity was of the different lagoons and storage ponds. At our wastewater treatment plant and then the capacity limits of our wastewater treatment plant. As it is permitted. The table below, table number two, is considering that the, if we adjusted the amount of effluent we would dispose of onto the land at a, at a greater rate or greater amount, it could marginally increase the total capacity of the system. You'll notice that the capacity in each of those tables is limited by the land disposal number, not necessarily the, the lagoons or the storage ponds. Reason for that is you would, we would need to acquire more land, more acreage uh on which to dispose of that effluent. I think we have 40 acres out there, 32. Yeah, 32 uh seems a little small, but we could probably get a, a, a smidgen more on our property, city property, but it's not going to have a, the effect that we would need. If we were to increase, you know, they'll use up to our total pond system capacity of 200,000 gallons per day, we would need a, a, a surface area on which to irrigate on, you know, in the range of like 70 acres, 75 acres from what I recall from that study. We aren't able to do that primarily because the land adjacent to us are either homes or where there is vacant land, it's on the flood plain. And we can't dispose of that effluent within the flood plain. So that, we're really boxed in. Where, not to say that we can't support development. We have approximately 200 customers, sewer customers. If you, you, there's a, a, a term that's used within engineering and capacity, living unit equivalents. So in a single residential home with an average of three people living in it, how much water would that family use or dispose of? It's kind of a Kentucky Windage number. That's mine. It's probably really scientific for Tom. But um, you can, you can, you can come up with different factors of what you considered, how many gallons per day would be your equal to one living unit, one living unit, one house. For, for the discussion today, I used the number 200. Tom may disagree with me. I think I was probably close to reason. Um, if we have 200 customers, 200 LEEs, our current system, sure, we could have incremental, slow growth. Uh, we could probably accommodate another 85 homes or so in our system. If we expand our, our permitting capacity, we could go to, you know, to another 225 homes. That's not going to, that's not going to do it when it comes for, for these types of subdivisions that, that are on the horizon.
I'm sorry, if you explain this, I'm missing. Effluent. You're talking about the, explain this.
So F, so you have um basically effluent is what comes out, the water that's been treated.
It's the treated wastewater.
So it's poopy water goes into the facultative lagoon. The poopy water has biochemical reactions that eat away at this stuff. And then
Evaporation pump.
And then, well, well, there's three ponds out there. One's the facultative lagoon where all the biochemistry goes on and microbes eat the poo.
Yeah.
And leave the sludge at the bottom. And then the, the water's on top. Well, it, it helps.
Yeah.
The, the other ponds don't have as much biochemical reaction and happen, there are more storage of that water as it finishes out that cleaning process. Um. We pump water out of those storage ponds onto the ground. We test that water, we pump up, out onto the ground that doesn't have, you know, pH and other, other items. And then every year we do a core sample into the ground to make sure we're not contaminating the ground uh to any, you know, detrimental degree uh within the parameters of our permit. So the affluent is what we're sprinkling on the ground. Is that treated wastewater?
And just, just for you to know, everything that comes from any pipe or any house goes to the central. And then it goes into other two that, then that's where it goes to become affluent in a sprinkler system on the actual property.
The main point here is it, it ain't a lot, right? So how, how far are we? Oh, is there, do you have another question? I'm sorry. Okay, um. Main point is where, there's a gap. You know, if based off of, I mean, this is kind of a thrown a duck, you know, dart a dartboard. But if these land development agreements get built out, these inquiries are, are built out, based on what we have, we know about today, there's probably 3,000 or so living unit equivalents. Um, which gives us a really a gap in our wastewater system, about 3,000 living unit equivalents, 3,000 homes that, that we wouldn't be able to, to accommodate. If our entire ETJ were turned into houses, if you kind of thought, it would probably be somewhere around 50,000 homes. If it was all, if, if, if you took all of our land and turned into homes, what would that, or commercial, you know, this commercial stuff going in there. But if we're totally built out over the next 25, 50 years, that, that would be really hard to do anytime in immediate future. But we got to that point. It's, it's a pretty large number. So that's from region down to real small, considering that the issues that we have of growth can happen to us or for us. We have to solve that gap. We have to solve that gap in our infrastructure capacity in order for us to have a seat at the table and be, be in a position to where development agreement, people ask us for development agreements, so I'd go to them, begging them to come into a development.
Said that we, on our current property where we have our current ponds, it's not enough land to be able to accommodate the 2,000.
What we can, we could accommodate between 85, 225, might be up to 250, maybe 300. You know, depending on how the system works. And if we really did a study, deep dive into it, we'd probably come up with a number. Let's be, suffice to say, we're probably about, our max is another 225 homes.
Right. I think it's safe to say that as, as you experience growth around you, that the sewer treatment system that you need is completely different from what you have today.
Right.
One you have today will, will suit your current needs.
We were going to go into that.
You're talking about.
Way different system. Well, they're not even just, we're, we're not going to get into system types, but what he's talking about is using a pond for the type, for the type of growth that it's not probably.
That's old school. That's old school.
It'll work for us.
I was wrong. It was, it's 42.46 acres.
Yeah, um, for the land, yeah. So you know, even if we incorporated another seven, eight acres into our calculate, I mean, we're talking in, you know, tens, maybe 100, not in the thousands where we need to be. So what do we do? We're faced with a gap. I want to talk about three potential courses of action that we can take with this. Um, let the developer provide the infrastructure themselves, you know, it's kind of the do no, do nothing in terms of our standpoint. We, we wouldn't necessarily go out of our way to accommodate that growth. Yeah, we'll get into the next slide. And we'll, yeah, we'll describe each of these in the next slide, in the bottom slides. The second one is, is a financing tool that's available to cities called Public Improvement Districts. Um, and then the third option is a public-private partnership where we would uh contract with, have an agreement with a third-party provider, um and the city not providing that service itself. So I'll, I'll go into each of these three in pretty good detail. And if you have any questions, we'll get into it. So first one, there's not a whole lot of description to it, but basically the way it is, is the city would not provide wastewater services. Is, is you're a developer, you want to come here, you're on your own, buddy, do it yourself. What they would likely do is um ask the city or petition to the state legislature to create a municipal utility district, a mud, which is what um previously has happened in our adjacent area. That municipal utility district operates completely separate from the city. And it's, and it's its own quasi-governmental organization. Think of like the Water Supply Corporation is completely separate from the city. The mud would be completely separate from the city and they would provide the wastewater needs. What the mud would do is they would be able to finance that by issuing bonds. And investors would buy those bonds at a coupon rate or interest rate to get a return. And those bonds would be services based off of a mud tax that's placed on the homeowners or property owners in that location. So muds are around, they're fairly popular. You know, my in-laws live it on mud. They pay mud taxes. Um. That's what do nothing would likely turn into. With that, each developer would likely install their own, or they'd find a way to, to coordinate together. But likely it would be, and so their own little package plant facility for their own little community, their own little muds. So you have, you know, mud one, mud two, mud three, mud one A, mud one B, mud, 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 mud. And you have a you know, potentially, you know, tens, twenties of these little package plants. Not so little, I mean, they're probably servicing a few hundred homes um all around the city. Create some risk in terms of, you know, oversight and maintenance. Yeah.
Make a good point. The reason that water is crystal clear in San Marcos River is because there's one regional plant that's in San Marcos. The problem with package plants is oversight. You got multiple ones. The pervading process and uh like I said, I'm a river guy, I'm saying it over and over again. What's good for the river is good for Martindale. We, it has to be done properly and package plants are a problem.
So, yeah, and to, to, to that one, we've seen one, or well, we've seen two, three, four, three. Three mud-related um or, or types of TCEQ, Texas Commission Environmental Quality, permits for these package plants. Cherryville, Cotton Center, hearings, you know, in a couple of weeks, you know, HK and some others plants going in that are going to dump. The more of these little plants everywhere, the more areas for, for something to break potentially. Now, there are some pros and cons, and we'll go eat through each of them, but before we do, any questions? Yeah, in our ETJ or, or nearby, or they dump into a creek that eventually flows into our ETJ or, or uh so.
Or some of them could even have a small section that's in the city limits and then the whole rest of it's in the ETJ. So they got to come larger than the city, but the rest.
So there, there, there are some, unless there's any questions on what this looks like, I'll go into pros, cons with pause. Sammy, do I think? Um. You know, there are pros. It's easy for us to do. There's no administrative burden on the city to do anything about it, right? So we don't have to worry about having city resources negotiating these agreements and things. We just, you want to do it, fine. Up to you. Have fun. We don't have to, if we did that sort of development, we would not be burdened with any of the operations or maintenance costs of the system. It'd be completely borne by somebody else, not our problem. You pay for it. You fix it. You, you, you break it, you fix it. Leave us out of it. We're not involved. And it would allow for growth nearby and would benefit the local commune businesses and, you know, we'd probably see some increase in our sales tax receipts. The con is to that, the revenues that would be generated and that would pale in comparison to anything that would be generated if, if they were to be incorporated into the city, annexed into the city and then paid the property tax, you know. Sales tax only, sales tax is a great resource. Um, but if your city limits stay small, you don't, you're going to eventually max out what, what that benefit, that potential is. There are a number of, I think, cons to consider. Um. Difficult, if not impossible, to negotiate for a full annexation of a development if we'll, if the city does nothing in terms of providing wastewater services. We'll see that in a previous negotiated development agreement where full annexation is off the table, partial annexation is on, sales tax and this and that, and some agreements regard, you know, on the periphery of how you bill customers and different things, but annex, full annexation, not there. And it's a lost revenue opportunity. If you allow, if, if right next door is a, is a mud and, and you'll and you don't incorporate, well, what happens to next door from that? You know, if you think of checkers or chess, what, what's the next square over? Well, if you're having to annex this, you're not going to be able to annex the next square over. So if you start changing your mind down the line, you kind of, you're behind the eight ball and you lost out. There might be ways to do it, but it gets way more difficult. So this approach would inhibit likely future annexation of adjacent properties if we decided to take a new approach. Talked about the patchwork, patchwork of package plants. Um, and then
Mr. Chirp's number three.
Yeah, right.
Forsight and awareness.
Forsight, yeah. Um, and then you're doing that at a, at a more of a macro level within the area, you're not achieving economies of scale. So you're going to have a developer spend a bunch of money doing this, you want to have, you know, this doing, you know, developer doing this. And the end result is everybody's paying these mud taxes higher than they needed to be paying on mud taxes if, for some rea, if they were otherwise a part of one, and they could pool their resources and that type of economy would just, it just reduces the economic output potential of, of the city. So the sales taxes that you get in your pros, again, are probably small.
So you're saying mud taxes would actually be more than coming to the city?
What, what I, what I was, what I was trying to explain is if um if you have a mud here and a mud here and a mud here and a mud here and a mud here, that each mud, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, are all going to be paying their own mud tax. If you combine them all into like a scene, single giant mud, all the amount of tax that all the people live in within those seven months would likely be less because they're, the developer, the person who's servicing, providing that service is able to, to achieve some economies of scale. Um. So if, if you allow this to happen, it's, it's almost a hidden cost. You're, you're, it's going to be a depressing effect on the local economy. Um, I could pop, you know, I could dust off my old books from my master's course and tell you exactly what that would be. But it would, it would have a, a, a negative effect on the economy in general, not just on an environment, but it would. And then um site development standards, so part of development agreements are site development standards, you know, what's going to be where, how many, how much green space and parks. You can't get into a development agreement, you can't have that conversation. And what they do is no parks at all. And it's just a grid of rooftops all with, you know, within, you know, two feet from window to window, all the way down the line. Nothing you can really do with it unless, you know, the, as long as they're, they compile subdivision regulations. You, you can't go any further than that. So this do nothing, probably a bad idea, but it is a potential. It becomes the default if we don't do something. If we don't do something, we are now doing nothing. So that's kind of what tonight's about is. Yeah, do something. I, one of my uh one of the axioms I've lived, have lived my life by, my, my dad told me when I was an eighteen, nineteen-year-old kid, you can't steer a parked car. You're not going to get anywhere in your life. You can only start going somewhere in your life. Where you end up, it's up to you, but you got to start going before you get there. Tonight's kind of that same concept. We got to start going to get somewhere. Doing nothing, I think is a bad approach. The uh, so this gets to one, one of the remaining two options, a public improvement district. In layman's terms, think of this as a mud that the city kind of owns. We don't have to disannex or anything. A public improvement district is an economic tool that's available to cities and counties that provides a benefit to the property owners within the boundary of that district. So that can take many different forms. You, in downtown corridors, you can have a public improvement district that just picks up trash all day.
Real quick, the public improvement district would be our existing city limits.
No.
Or, or new development.
So public improvement and district, um districts can be established within an ETJ.
In the ETJ.
Or city limits. We could have a public improvement. We could have a public improvement district for parks, you know, and we could fund the parks with a public improvement district or other things. What where it's of great interest to me and we'll get on the next next slide is how it relates to um the wastewater treatment plants. But basically how the process works, how this district comes to be in the first place is that the landowner, the property owner says, hey, city, would you please allow the creation of a public improvement district? We say yes. And then what happens then is it it provides financial resources to that landowner who is eventually going to, you know, this property developers want to eventually subdivide and pass that on. It assess a levy on that property owner for the benefit that's created within that district. So in this case, if it's a wastewater treatment plant and sewer system, the cost of that benefit now gets levied as an assessment against the property owners of that within that district. So like a mud where a mud, they have a mud tax. This would be a public improvement district, a PID assessment. Now, the difference is that cost, that assessment is known upfront at the time it's created. There's.
Prior to development.
Prior to the, prior to the development for the, yeah, at at, once the PID is fully created, the assessment is is fully known. So if a homeowner comes in, moves into this brand new house that developer built, the builder, you know, created on this land, they used to be told, hey, that you're within a PID and your assessment is twenty thousand dollars. You can pay it over the course of twenty years and there'll be added a thousand dollars each year to your property taxes, or if you wanted to, you pay twenty thousand dollars now and be done with it and never have to see it ever again. Most probably would just want to pay as part of their property tax. As we've seen with our, you know, city, as property taxes values go up, the assessment rate, tax rate on that assessment goes down so that they're always paying that that flat amount essentially.
So they still wouldn't be part of the city.
It would be, this is where it gets fun. So um there's, here's, here's the, I'll get to the how how they'd be a part of the city later on, but the authority to do this is in a local government code. You can do public improvement projects for all sorts of things. It, sky's almost the limit. The key for us is the acquisition, construction or improvement of water, wastewater or drainage facilities. That is, that is the infrastructure that we need.
Can you support?
What's that?
I just.
Yeah.
Wanted to hear that again.
So um it basically, a city, if the government body of a municipality or county finds that promotes the interest of the municipality or county, the government body may undertake an improvement project that provides a special benefit to a defined part within that district, municipalities uh within that municipality or its extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ. And it can include all these things. For us, item nine is the most, most interesting, but you can also do this sort of things for libraries, off-street parking, you know, parks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, it is, be clear, it's a tax or it's an assessment, it's additional cost, right? So if you pay, you know, the the city's portion of of your property tax is only, you know, a small amount of the twelve property taxes you pay. You probably, you know, it was one point four to, you know, whatever that is. This gets, for the homeowners that live within that district, this would be an additional assessment that they'd have to pay, which probably wouldn't like, but it gives them a sewer system. How it works, what we would want to do is look at a debt issuing public improvement district. Based on the phase and when you do these, these issuings of debts, um kind of it kind of changes the nature of of how it's ye- I guess, put together. Um, so there would be an underwriter that would be involved in this process that would oversee the issuance of bonds and would uh advertise those to institutional investors. The one that would apply most to to our scenario are these dirt bonds as as and underwriter has referred to them as. Happens at the earliest stage of development and it's fun, used to fund directly the construction, the improvements constructed by the developer. You know, it's typically when when there's nothing but dirt out there, that's what we would be looking at. There's other types of bonds. The basic mechanism is that the assessment, the cost of the the su- the system levied against the individual lot or owner. And then that assessment is a basically a lien that's only subordinate to government taxes. So it becomes, you know, I don't know, I don't want to misspeak about financial terms, but basically if they're to foreclose after their taxes are paid, before anything else, the PID's getting paid. So if you have people who don't pay, you know, they're foreclosed, you're 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 still somewhat protected. And they're paid annually and uh great question, here's how it works. So um I'll I'll focus on the left hand or right hand side of the screen. That starts the vertical top to bottom. The bond investors, so big bank investor, you know. I'll use one as default, Lehman Brothers, now that they're no longer around. Lehman Brothers buys municipal bonds, PID bonds, as a part of their portfolio package that they then sell to their clients who invest in there. They purchase these bonds for a defined coupon rate or interest rate. Those those proceeds are are given to the underwriter and managed through an underwriter, that's a, that's a company that we would contract with. So base, some, so kind of like if you, when you purchase your home, if you've got a mortgage, someone at the bank other than your loan officer looked at all your paperwork and said, is it good? We have one of those. Um, and then those funds would go into the trustee project funds and then a trustee, another person who's responsible for the accounting of all of this.
Outside the city.
Would issue the pay, would disperse that funding. To whom, how, where? That's where the left to right comes in. So the developer would engage contractor, say, go build me that. The contractor builds that and says, now that I've built it, here's my invoice. Developer says, all right, then was your work up to snuff? Did you actually do what I asked you to do? And okay, yeah, you did, all right, I'll prove the invoice. That that invoice then goes to the city, county, whoever, us. And we would say, yeah, not only did you meet their requirements, but you met the city requirements and we accept that this work has been completed. And then the trustee says, all right, um, company who just built that thing, here's your payment. So we're out of the money, we're just approving invoices basically. And a whole lot of other stuff is happening on the side so that the funds are coming in from people who invest and going out to the people who provide the services. And all, and the cost of all that is incorporated into, you know, how that bond is structured, they.
Somebody in the city make sure are being followed by the cities.
Yeah, so so what we do is have Tom Turk go kick a pipe and say, yep, that pipe is the pipe we want it, it needed to be. I'm I'm being kind of tongue in cheek, but that's basically how it would work is before we accept that infrastructure is being completed. Um, or, you know, and then which would later be conveyed to the city. We're inspecting it to make sure that it was done.
Issuer, there's. Okay, get it.
So that's how, that's how these things kind of put together. The, any, any questions, am I going too fast?
No.
All right, so.
I have, I have one question.
Yeah.
Does, if it, if if a developer comes in and say they have five hundred acres and they want to make it a PID, does that become part of our city limits? Do we have any say in what gets developed in that space?
Yeah, so in order for you to have a PID, one of the things you need or the city would say, well, if you want a PID, you have to sign a development agreement. And that development agreement is going to say all those things that you just said. So if um Sam Clinton says, hey, I want to turn my riverfront property into a resort and I want a PID to help pay for all the amenities that are, public amenities are going to be available at my resort facility. We say, if he was in the ETJ, we say, great idea, we'd love to do a PID. How about we do a development agreement? And in that development agreement, you're going to annex yourself in the city. Well, I don't want to, I guess you don't want the PID. You want the PID, you're going to annex yourself in. So that's kind of, that's, gives you that leverage that we talked about earlier.
And so they would, you're saying that a developer would create a PID which would give them bond money to build their own wastewater?
So that, so the the developer would request the city establish a PID. And then that PID, there's some mechanism behind the scenes that the city would then appoint for a a board to oversee, you know, kind of like a mud board or district board or ward, you know, corporation board, a PID board, and there'd be a PID administrator and there'd be a whole, you know, small staff. Likely what we do is use people who do this for other things and so they they do them all all over the place and they, you know, they'll spend their entire day staring at a lump of dirt waiting for it to change. We would, the developer would come to us and say, we want you to, we would like you to do a PID to help us. What does is it finances their development. So they have to, they don't have to, it's, so developer, they don't have to do, they don't have to go out, they don't have to find any more money. The city finds them the money and says, yeah.
But they have to get a lot of it so that they can fund their.
The PID has to get a lot of it.
But it's strictly volunteer from the developer's side if he wants to. We offer that PID and say, you give us a PID.
Yeah.
Do the financing.
We'll, we'll, we'll say.
The city can do the PID.
City or county. So, but in in this is, all right, this is a little inside baseball, but if say for some reason we we do that whole do nothing or we go down this approach and we do nothing and then the they go knock on Hoppy's door and say, hey, county, would you establish a PID? And guess what? We're going to do it.
For a wastewater treatment plant?
Maybe, maybe not, but they could. So for us, any of these development agreements, we want to be in the driver's seat.
Okay, the city develop a PID before any development starts?
What the uh the under.
Agreement with the development?
Yes, we will, yes, we would have a development agreement that would discuss creating a PID.
And we create a PID before we even.
We can, yeah, we can, we can create a PID for, I mean, if we want to do a PID for the park, you know, we could do a PID for the park if we want to, or we could, the problem is who, who you, who, who are you putting that assessment on? And that's where you.
Be part of the development agreement.
That's where, if you don't have, this makes it really easy when there's one landowner who has this like six hundred acre plot of land they want, hey, I want this, I want a PID. It's a lot more difficult when it's four hundred and twenty-seven landowners who now have to petition for to create a PID.
Right.
So doing it upfront is is when when it makes the most sense.
That, that was our, that was our pros.
Yeah, so um the the pros, it it allows for full annexation, development agreements. It provides a financial tool similar to a mud, but it's under the control of the city. So there's no dis annexation, we don't have to give away land for a developer to do what they want. Ridiculous idea. The city may own and operate the treatment plant because it's, it's, you know, it's part of that development agreement. Yeah, once it's built, it's conveyed over to the city and now we own and operate it. And the improvements, the sex, that's, the improvements are assessed as a fixed cost on those property owners. Um, it's not not really a variable. Cons, there's some administrative hurdles to this. It's, it's, it's a very popular tool. San Marcos has them, nearly any city of any size in Texas is doing this at some level. Many cities have multiple PIDs. But there, there is administrative hurdle to this. We'd have to acquire some financial services, an advisory firm, an underwriter, trustee, a bond counsel, a PID administrator, probably some other folks, but guess what? We don't pay any of those folks out of our own money, those all get paid out of the bond proceeds.
Out of the taxpayers.
The, not out of the landowners, not ta- I don't want to use the term taxpayer because then I'll give the connotation that it's going to be levied against people in the city limits. It's not. Unless we choose to. It's something that might come up down the line as we look at who the beneficiaries are in this, but.
So, I mean, we would have to have the PID first before we could build the treatment plant, right?
Well, yeah, you would, you would have the PID established before the treatment plant is constructed because of the construction of that treatment plant would be paid for through the disbursements out of that trustee. So if we go back to this, it's going to be that bottom corner.
Least, okay, so you'd have one particular landowner and say, okay, I want a PID, then you start the process of building plants. And then there's other ones, so they, that's the question for me. So the other ones that come in, do we say, hey, we got a treatment plant, we want to do a PID?
But we would, we, that's something, that's a question that I've had as well, and that's something where a financial advisor is going to be able to give us clear direction. I, I don't want to misspeak, but as long as we all understand, I'm kind of speaking off the cuff here, what I think might happen is that assessment fees are, that would be assessed, would be used to pay the PID back because they're getting benefit out of that PID. So if we develop a wastewater treatment plant and it costs seven million dollars and it supports six hundred acres of development. And then some other per, and so they got charged, that six hundred acres was charged seven million dollars. And you had another developer come in with a hundred acres and say, hey, I want to connect my hundred acres to your seven million dollar treatment plant. I'm going to say, great. Matt, you owe one seventh of the of the cost of that thing as a, you know.
Original PID.
The original PID or however it's designed, but but as 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 an assessment, they can get added on and maybe, you know, that money is then used to help pay off the bond because they're getting, you know. I'm not sure how all that works. I suspect that's worked, I don't know if Tom, if you have any experience with creating a PID and then people tagging on to that. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a unique thing because the wastewater treatment plant is not a defined area benefit as much, so it's one.
The context of a treatment plant, it would be designed and built to serve that PID, right? If other people outside the PID uh want to uh use the plant, then you're you're using up capacity that's reserved for that PID, so it's.
And it's also, and it's also only being paid for the the levy assessed that is reimbursing the cost of that is only being borne by the property owners within the boundary of the PID despite the benefit going to people outside of the PID.
So one of the unknowns that I don't, I I will have to, if we go down this, that we go down this approach is can you use the PID approach? The easiest way to do a PID approach is to create PID, 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 PID with all their little package plants for their own little pits. That's simple one-to-one, you know, kind of scenario. I don't know how it all works if you try to do, you know, many to one, you know, one treatment plant for like seven pits or, you know, can you do one PID for all of it? Which might be what we do, but then you don't have the development agreements backing it up, but that's something where, yeah, all the advisory firm, underwriter, all those folks are going to be able to to um advise us on it.
In the real world, you really want to have that treatment plant in the one area that we say our existing facility. Like I said, wanted to do it one time.
Yeah.
We have that facility. So so the, so we do our wastewater plants there or we, the, they do the PID with the six hundred acres that we put the facility on the edge of their property because they have, they don't have to do the infrastructure to get to the wastewater. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's another question because the cost of that ac- extra piping, if you will. Could that really be assessed on that PID if that pipe is going outside that district? There's some technicalities when you start going down this that there's going to be some learning to 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 undertake.
There's absolutely a way it can be done, but you're absolutely correct to get your your legal team. There's absolutely a way it can be done, but you're absolutely correct to get your, your legal team and everybody. Because I don't know, I don't even have experience on outside. Typically, we only do them inside the boundaries, right?
The million dollar question is, we build a plant and we try to get people to come into that to be able to have a, a development, a development agreement based on that we have a treatment plant we can offer.
Yeah, what, what we say is, we have a treatment plant that it wouldn't exist, but because of the river boundary and cost rate of, but if we're going to so build a treatment plant that could service 50,000 LEU's with the millions of gallons of, of daily, you know, wastewater that it would create. Yeah, and then we, at that point you say a developer is going to look at this and say, well, I don't want to pay extra to build my own stuff. Let me just pay the, you know, whatever it costs to tap into it.
The location's going to be the problem.
Location's a big deal, yeah.
Because you're going to have, you're going to have the guy that's got the pit, has got the 600 homes, he goes, he builds it. Or we, we have the pit, the bond, whatever, then we build it and then he's paying for it and.
Well, yeah, well, well, some of those details I don't want to get too deep on in this conversation because we're just a bunch of blind mice trying to figure out what the elephant looks like. I prefer to bring in the, the people who do this for a living to answer those type of questions.
So the pit basically is an enticement for the developer.
It's a finance, it's a financing tool. So where, where, for the developer, we are, we, essentially the city providing a financing service to the developer so that they don't have to go through the headache of trying to establish a mud.
Mr. Turk, do you have something to say?
Is it possible to create, conceivable to create a pit for the entire ETJ in the city?
That's, that's what I'm, I'm curious about. The, the issue is the, 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 how you get the property owners to, because it has to be on the property owner's initiative. So if you do it for all the ETJ, you would have to get all those property owners to, to be part of that petition. I mean, it's, it's kind of hard to herd cats, especially in the ETJ. When a lot of those, those large plots, you know, are owned by Humpty Dumpty and go ahead and send me a letter at, you know, P O Box 497 in New York City or Houston or something where it's, it's not real people at that point. A lot of those, so it'd be tough. There's no phone numbers. They just, hey, Jim, Bob, Susie.
Mr. Turk, have you had this, have you done this before? Have you seen this done before?
No, not, not a, a huge pit that serves an entire ETJ. It's just difficult to get the number of landowners to consent to be part of that pit. Very difficult to do. Another problem that we're, we're going to face is, you know, a somewhat of a regional plant makes an awful lot of sense from one point of view. But as you guys know, anybody that wants to discharge into the San Marcos River, their permits are being opposed from environmental groups. They're all, they're all enforcing or trying to enforce the one water concept, which is decentralization of sewer plants. So instead of one regional plant, they'd rather see five smaller plants somewhere heavy on land application, which you already do. They, they want to reuse the water for beneficial use. So we're talking about reclamation and having piping systems to go back to the yards of the effluent, you know, see if they'll water your yard with it. All great concepts.
Purple pipe?
Yeah, all, all great concepts, but very different from the one regional plant that discharges into the river.
So it kind of looks like what's going on here. I mean, we've seen it in Yulin. It's going to be little plants kind of pumping up.
That, that, that method would, is what pits are more geared towards. Pits, so pits are, pits are like muds, it's just how, how the, it's just city control.
What I'm seeing is it'll be multiple treatment plants, like we have in Yulin, those little treatment plants.
I, I, I don't know what they, how theirs are, but I'll take your word for it, yes.
I'm just, yes, I'm, I'm no expert.
So let me, so we, we helped the city of Blanco submit their permit for their wastewater treatment plant. And what we submitted was basically a, a plant that land applied, reuse and storage. That was the combination that, that we used. And of course, they, they currently discharge into the, the Blanco River and that permit's being opposed.
Instead of five, two, than five, five, two?
It's actually better than that. It produces type one. So that's, that's where the world is going if, if you're trying to discharge into a hill country stream. That's, that's the way the world is going. And, and, and I, I see you going in that direction here. But not with one big plant because that's, it's just too difficult. For those, because I, I see, I see a handful of other systems that are kind of spread out where you can, you can, like a package plant, you can treat that water. And basically you have another piping system within the pit or the subdivision that takes it back to the yards.
Yeah, purple pipe.
Exactly.
Did you, what, do you know, you know, the cost of that plant in Blanco, do you know the?
The wastewater.
Okay, the one, the one that you did, the one they did it in?
It was about $6 million bucks.
$6 million.
So I, I have a question that kind of goes back, kind of past 10 minutes ago when you made a comment about making certain that we have experts in, in, in place that would enable us to, to guide us to move forward. And so I, I would like to say what those are and ask if you agree.
It's, it's, most of them are listed. So you're going to have to get a financial advisory firm. You'll have to contract with an underwriter. They'll need a trustee and trust in, and then a bond counsel. Pit administrator probably and members of a pit board. And there are, I think, one or two others I might have left off the list, but just to get the sense at the very start, it's advisory firm, underwriter, probably your pit administrator.
Administrator.
The council.
Legal counsel.
And that's, that's, that's the, that's the con. The other is, you know, it takes a while to.
Those are expensive.
Well, they're, they go in, they get paid out of the bond issuance. So it's not like the city's paying for it. But it's like, kind of like, kind of like a grant, like our grant that we're doing. That grant administrator's taking, you know, however many percent. And so the value of that grant that's actually going into something is less. You're paying all these people, was going back into like the actual systems, less. And then the other con is, it takes a while for bonds to get issued and advertised and, and bond sales are subject to investors buying them. And so there have been, you know, some cases, cities and other places, they do bonds and no one buys them. And so.
And then what?
The city, nobody buys.
There, there's, there's mechanisms to.
Well, I do. Anybody else have any?
My question, have you had any potential developers or interested in pit?
I think if we approached them and said, this is the direction that the city council would like to go, would you be interested? You'd probably have a lot of them be intrigued by it because it's, it's, they've likely done it before elsewhere. If they, if they do develop.
Yulin has at least three pits.
Those are tough. Okay, so the facility we saw in Yulin was a pit, was financed by a pit?
Uh, I don't think so.
That was financed by B D R T, Fort Creek Utility through their partnership with County Line Center. That is a true regional plan with a wholesale treatment.
Well, I was impressed, yeah.
With wholesale treatment agreement with County Line Center. So the pits that are being done are only covering the internal infrastructure related to development, parking, parking improvements and other things that the city is negotiating as part of.
I mean, you can do sidewalk improvements with pits and things. So they're, they're, it's not, pits are not, you know, constricted to just wastewater. Wastewater is, and is a, is a thing that you can finance with them.
Okay.
Yulin relies on county line for water and wastewater. And that, that's a little different than Martinville.
Oh, so the, so the water.
Yulin doesn't have any utilities.
Okay, so the water, the, the water supply and the sewer are the same?
County line, sorry.
County line, okay. That's, that's an advantage. Okay, I understand.
I think, I think Crystal Clear has a, has a small little wastewater portion too. All right. Next up, private-public partnerships. So this is another way that the city could possibly provide services where we, you could probably take a more active approach or a more passive approach, either through a wholesale agreement, a contract, where the city would contract for a operator of a wholesale treatment plant to clean that water and dispose of it. We, the city would, in that scenario, would likely maintain and operate its own sewer system. And the, we would contract the wholesale provider. They would build and operate that treatment plant. The sewer customer, you know, who, who's connected to that service would pay a monthly service fee to the city, set, likely set by the city in some way. And then the city would take those service fees, bundle them together, probably cut a little lower head off the top and provide that funding back to the wholesale developer or provider who makes a return on that investment. So.
That'd be, that'd be, that's, is that a pit? I mean, would it be?
Now, this is, this is, this is totally separate. We, we, so we, we, we talked about pits, now we're talking pilot, public.
This is another option.
Which is also called wholesale agreement.
Yeah, so we contract under a wholesale agreement and a private entity would do the hard work upfront for us. They come in, they have their own investors. They come in with their money and they invest in our treatment facility and, and the land by building a treatment facility. And then they get a return on investment by the city paying them to use that facility. And so the cost of the service is borne, not really on the property owners, like in a pit. It's borne by the sewer customers through the city. Yeah, it's a toll road. It's a toll road for poo.
And they build it for you. And then they have the exclusive right to collect the, the, the fees and the revenues.
But if you don't drive on the road, you don't have to pay.
Your customers don't come, the customers don't come.
Yeah.
The, another wrinkle on that is due through a franchise agreement, which is more of a common process with solid waste trash services where the, the city would have a contract with a real retail provider who would have a franchise within the city. Basically, they would own or operate all the wastewater services under that franchise agreement. They would build their utility customers and they collect fees. And then for the benefit of having a monopoly essentially within our city of, of this system, they pay us a franchise fee, like the cable company does or the telephone company does. And the city would just collect that fee and say, thank you very much. That's great doing business with you. Under that franchise agreement, we would, we'd create terms or have terms where if land was annexed in, to say, if, if, if the land was annexed in, that the retail provider would have to provide services to that, to that location.
That's the million dollar question.
Say it again, what is the million dollar?
Million dollar question is, you build this facility.
We don't. A private company does.
Company building and we have to say, we have a treatment plant, here it is, you're in our ETJ.
We would say, we have a contract at that point.
We have a contract, here, here it is, you got a hookup, you will come into our sewer.
If, if you want, if you want access to our service provider, you have to con, you have to get access through the contract that we have with the city. There, we would basically make it so that, so that if that private company came in and planted a wastewater treatment facility in our backyard, you know, in our, in our jurisdiction, anybody who wanted to connect to that, they would have to do so through the city. They would not be able to contract separately or independently with that provider.
No. When, when we have a service, we have a utility.
It's ETJ now.
In the ETJ, as per our cove, they must come to us and have, and create, we negotiate a development agreement.
They theoretically, they could do their own dang thing and as if we didn't have it. But what we would do is when we contract either wholesale agreement or franchise agreement with a private company, we tell them, go, go ahead and build a real big system or go in and get a certificate of conveyance in necessity, a C C N, establishes a jurisdiction under which anybody who wants to connect sewers coming to your plant. And so it gives that regional plant perspective. So someone's building within that C C N and they're going to do sewer systems.
C C N would be our ETJ.
It could be wherever we want it to be, but yeah, it would be in our ETJ, ETJ, city limits, or wherever, you know, that would make sense. They would get that, not through the city. We'd ask them to go get it. Get it through, through, through T C E Q would grant them that C C N. Like the water supply corporation, they get a C C N for the water supply. We get a, the, the, the private company would get a C C N for the treatment of the wastewater.
And I was talking about the developer, if I misspoke.
Okay.
I wasn't talking about the treatment center, the third party.
Yeah, so, so if someone's in the ETJ, they say, screw you. Okay, well, you're not getting sewer system. And then they can build their half acre plots and, you know, have, have, have site sewer, you know, facility. Basically, everybody have a septic tank. Like, I mean, that's still feasible, but no, not any large scale developer is going to be.
Large scale, I'm a large scale developer.
Large scale developer, they're going to want a sewer system.
They're going to want a regional.
Go with a package plant.
Well, well, they would, they would, under a C C N, they wouldn't be able to do a package plant. They'd have to come to a regional provider for it.
How will you do that?
We make it happen by, as a condition of the contract that we sign with the, the private company. No, no, no. So, so we would, there's two, there's two contracts that are going to play. And we're, we're, there's a contract we have with the provider, the, the. And we have the contract with the developer and we're, we're sitting in the middle. We're saying to the developer, if you want access to our sewer contract, our provider, you have to come through us to get there. So you're, so we're going to make you, if you want access to that, we're going to require that you come in through a development agreement. Development agreement, that's when we get to negotiate all the other fun stuff and then they get their wastewater.
Been done before.
My understanding is that it has. I, I don't, I don't know to, to what great extent it's been done in this exact, to, I know it's being done actively. I don't know where it's been completed and put into practice for a significant duration of time.
So we're, and that's the wholesale agreement part?
Yeah, or the franchise. I, I mean, it's either one, it's, it, either way, what's, what's the same with those is we're leveraging a partnership, a contract with a public, or I'm sorry, a private entity, a company. Company comes in and says, all right, we'll put you in this plant. How we service that contract in terms of fees and really what is the city's role in providing that utility service? Changes between a wholesale agreement, do you want to be active participants in the provision of wastewater? Then the city would still maintain.
Tell it for something to the water company.
Yeah, they do. But they're not part of that, they're not part of.
They don't go through the, through us.
But that's, if they would, if, if the water company was part of the city, that sure as hell would. And this wouldn't be a problem. I mean, the, the, the problem of what treating all the water would be an issue, but the problem of people being able to say, screw you, I'm not joining the city, partly because the wastewater supply corporation is not part of the city and we have no way of controlling. Because if someone walks into Steve Fong's door and says, I want water, as long as they provide an application that meets the needs of their water supply, they have to give them the water, right? So they can't just, they can't tell them, oh, fish.
We could have.
We would be better positioned to negotiate.
Better, that's the question. I mean, to me, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like a great idea, but I mean, you better get some case studies. I mean, I, what I don't want to be left is the city holding the bag, man. I mean, if we do a. I mean, if we do an agreement with this public, private, or wholesale, or whatever. And then we build this plant, and these other guys, well, you know, hell, go to hell, we're gonna do a package plant or whatever, I mean, if we can.
It wouldn't be in their best interest, I think.
You know what?
I would be, I, I don't, I, if, if, if there's a CCN in place, then they're coming to us. If for, they're on the, outside that boundary of the CCN for whatever reason, it's likely still gonna be in their best interest to. Cooperate with the city to make that happen. Or if, it depends on what the nature of the contract and the terms, cause there's gonna be protections both ways. Companies wanna be protected, that city doesn't go, we'll sign a contract with you and then go do Pids everywhere, right, cause they're not gonna make the return on their investment. But if there's. There's always gonna be a way, if the facility exists that has the capacity to, to make it happen. There's gonna, or at least have that negotiation, right now, we don't even have the ability to negotiate.
I mean, I told, I, I'm gonna be devil.
You, you can't, you cannot, this, again, like I start at the top. Pretend the city legislature hates city government, that's gonna get pretty close of reality. And then try to find a way to annex more land into a city. Legislature wanna make it real hard, dang hard for you to do it, so when it comes to being able to force somebody, compel somebody to do something. It's gonna be pretty difficult, but when you're sitting there with a, you know, a, a system that can do two million gallons a day of treatment. Well, what, yeah, sure, I'll just put a, you know, fourteen inch pipe down, down the hill and be done with it.
And if the water company at this point has water, and we have the ability to flush it along?
I, I like your idea, I hope it's, I, I think it's a brilliant strategy, but I just say, I would just, I would like to see, well, we're just discussing it now.
Yeah.
I mean, these developers, we.
This, this, public-private partnerships are, are the, have been the wave of the future. In transportation infrastructure, you'll see that in, as toll roads. There are regions in this country where you cannot throw a rock without hitting a toll road. Mm, mm, because of the, you know, financial constraints and, and things that. Cities, counties, states are in, public-private partnerships by and large are, are the wave. That a lot of infrastructure investments are getting done. Particularly, if, if you're of one political persuasion or, or another. One is very happy with them, one of them is, you like them. But even on the federal level, you know, where they're talking, you know, infrastructure improvements, different things. It's all tied around public-private partnerships, new airports, public-private partnership, new road.
I think it's great, but I wouldn't, you know, if we get down this road, I'd like to have a, it would be great to see somebody that's done this before.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Simmer city.
There, yeah, this, this is not without, without risk, and we'll get to risks in a second, but there are pros and cons to this thing. You know, wholesale agreement, franchise agreement, one's on top, one's on bottom, pros, allows for annexation. With the wholesale agreement, we're in more control of the management, the wastewater collection, the sewer system itself. For a pro with the franchise agreement, we just click, we just said a whole bit, it's mailbox money. The person telling me what's the best kind of money, there is a mailbox money, you sit at home, walk outside, you go out to your mailbox, and boom, there's money. Franchise agreement's a little bit like mailbox money. Cons to a wholesale agreement, you lack some control and rate setting. You know, as the contract goes, y- y- the contract's gonna be, as the last bullet, likely gonna be a very long-term contract. There's gonna be limited, uh, flexibility in operating with other than that long-term contract. The, the private investor's gonna want, make sure that they make their returns on that investment. And someone's gonna have to pay for it, again, like the Pid, homeowners are paying for it, this case is the customer's gonna pay for it, it's gonna be paying for it. In the way of higher sewer rates, so, you know.
And say, say the pros again.
Annexation and city control with the collection on a wholesale agreement.
Okay.
On the con, there's gonna, there will be higher rates. If I'm a, if a home, a new home goes in, in, in Martindale's ETJ, and now it's incorporated in the city, and I'm a new homeowner, I've come in. Someone's gonna get the pound of flesh out of me one way or another, it's either gonna happen through a, a pit assessment, or it's gonna happen through your sewer fee, but at the end of the day. You're the sucker who bought the home, you're gonna be paying for it, right, so.
I have a question, and maybe Mr. Turk knows. Would those higher rates be assessed to the new developments? That are coming in, attaching to this regional plant? And/or the current residents, would the current residents be?
That would be something that'd be negotiated in contract.
I'm just asking of curiosity.
Now, the, the, theoretically, the, the, the new plant that is being built and financed through the PPP. Is, is there to serve new growth?
Thank you.
It shouldn't impact the, uh, existing customers at all.
God, thank you.
Would that be more of a regional plant?
Yes.
Um, it, it could be regional, it, it could be decentralized as well, I mean, uh, either way.
Probably a mix, it's gonna, I think, topography, you know, land elevation is gonna, the river. Tho- those environmental factors are gonna have a large, um, if, and any approach that is taken. It's gonna have a lot to do with how it's designed, cause you're, you're gonna want it to flow downhill, right, as much as possible. Said less, less lift stations you're putting in, lift stations cost money, or paying to maintain, as we know. So if there's a way to do it with reduced lift stations and still keep it without the, out of the, you know, flood zone. Then that's probably what we'd wanna do, uh, but there's probably areas where. Does it make sense to build a lift station, a pipe all over this hill, or are we just better off doing a plant on this side of the hill and?
Little small.
Yeah.
Or is it better to?
Martindale's pretty flat, but, you know.
Or is it better to make this subdivision from the ground up with purple pipe and everything?
And, and also land acquisition for the, for these old plants, I mean, we've already got a piece of property.
Yeah, so that, that would probably be part of the contract. And what sort of rates and cost structures are built into it, we, we, if we tell the, the, a private company. Uh, not only do, are you gonna provide the service, but you're gonna purchase your own land to do it. They wanna pass that cost of purchasing their own land onto us. And it's kinda subject to what their ability is to do that. I don't think, under this type of public-private partnership, can't, might bail away indefinitely. I don't know if eminent domain and things would be able to be applied to, to this, it could. But, I mean, that's a, that's all, that's a whole nother ball of wax if we get into that. We, we, we're likely, it was, yeah, the developer owns a property, they wanna put it on, they put this plant on their own property, right?
Yeah, I, I, what, what I think I'm seeing in San Antonio, because they combine the water and the sewer in the same bill. But then there's a stormwater fee, there's a au- authorization fee, and all these other fees are included. So say if you use three thousand gallons of water, that could be about a hundred and fifty dollar bill, you know?
Oh, yeah.
What city of San Antonio does, they, and I, I don't know if someone is more.
No, the, the rates that, that you, that new home buyers or homeowners that would be serviced under. This type of agreement would be significant, now, consider the alternative, they're not paying that extra mud tax or Pid assessment. So, you know, it's, doing this, it's a, that costs a little more front of your face, cause every dang month, instead of. If you mortgage your house, it being part of some escrow, and you're pa, you know, oh, my taxes went up this year, okay, oh, my taxes went up this year, huh. Oh, my taxes went up again, okay, and it happens anyways, cause your taxes are going up. This one's ev- every month, and like, this dang bill's expensive, so in that way, there's a little bit of, you know, it's out in front, but either way, you're. One way or another, someone's paying for it, and it's gonna be the person who lives in that new place.
It kinda looks like where the area is developing, is what I'm seeing, Yulin, for example, they're gonna have these little, little plants. Looks like that's what's gonna go down the road, what I've seen, I know that's true, but.
That's kinda what Tom was saying.
And these are, and these are above ground plants?
The one we looked at, that BDRT facility, and they had a little plant, and then they add to it as the, as more discharge. You know, uh, they're, and they're not package plants, which I like about it.
And, and, and I'm curious, and I don't know, so maybe somebody has, in a private partner. I mean, a private, public partnership or wholesale agreement. Does the city pay for that to get built? Or does the third-party company that we contract with pay for that facility?
The, the incidence, the, the, the burden is ultimately paid on the homeowner. The, the initial investment would be paid by the company, the city would, it'd be no out-of-the-pocket expense for the city.
That's what I wanna hear.
Yeah, your partner comes in and builds the plant. On the hope that development occurs in the future, and as homes come online, they begin to date. That revenue comes in, and then they, they get their investment back.
So we don't have to save up a zillion dollars to build a regional plant?
That's what you had discussed before, I think.
Well, we would, we, no matter, neither of these two options. Ne- ne- neither of these two options, um, public, public partnership. Ni- neither of the options, the private-public partnership or a public improvement district is money coming out of our pocket. Which, uh, if you recall, um, our strategic plan that we did, community-based strategic plan. One of the shining lights that came out of that was for people in the community, we don't wanna pay for development. We wanna hap, if it happens, wanna happen smart, but we don't wanna be paying for it. The public improvement district or public-private partnership. Either of those options, there's no money coming out of our pockets that, to make that happen, it's, it's financing tools. Either leveraging investors in a private company, or leveraging, you know. Bonds through a, a pit, so, is everybody good on? Yeah.
Shut up.
You don't have to, this is a workshop, we can keep going.
When I saw BRT, they had, I remember, was it three little plants, like, is that, is that right? There was like two or three. Yeah, but I mean, the long term is gonna be like two, was it one on the other side of the river, was it three?
There's three, they.
Oh, you're, you're talking about the original presentation that BRT had made and presented, yeah, there was an analysis that was. Done by BRT's engineer about where you would look at for regionalization of wastewater. And if I recall correctly, it was three.
Three, it was, so is it, was it two on the other side?
One over on Dickerson Road, one at the existing plant side, and then one on the other side of the river.
So that's what, that's what your engineers came up with.
Yeah, and then that's based off of a very high level, very quick and dirty, look at the topo map and, and. Figure out your basins and how much land there is draining through a certain.
It's a very pretty nap, back of the nap, back of the nap.
It's gotta have a lot more details put to it, but it's the start of a good plan, and it was just a, a hypothetical. Here's if you ultimately build out what that could.
So that, I don't wanna put you some numbers, but, uh, I, I guess the cost would be less than a regional plant.
Well, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go down that path too much, um, that for tonight. If, if we go down the path, if, if the council wants to pursue pro- public-private partnerships. That will be part of the market research and contracting.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna make any decisions.
Um, so, here, here's, uh, this is the, my, my last slide of data. Um, comparison, she's always ready to go home. The, so, the do-nothing approach, the public improvement district, the Pids, or I think, to me, it's, it's. It's simpler to consider the wholesale agreement, there might be pros and cons which, that we can weigh between the two. But for the purpose of this slide, I went with the wholesale agreement instead of the franchising agreement. So, some criteria that I, I, I thought of, there might be other things that you would prioritize. But something to, to assist with the conversation. Does the approach help achieve a full annexation through a development agreement? The do-nothing approach firmly, no, the Pid, wholesale agreement, yeah, it helps. Um, city control, uh, do nothing, everything's out kinda your, outside your control. Pid, you have near total control, uh, wholesale agreement, you have partial control. You, there's, there are parts of it, a control, the collection system, the contract that you establish. But some of the, you, you have to consider that a profit is on the backend of, to this. How that investment cost is transferred to consumers, so in do-nothing, it's gonna be a mud, it's gonna be variable. Be like another tax, public improvement district, that cost is gonna be fixed, it's gonna be a fixed assessment, assessment that's known within that district. And then wholesale, it'll be variable, but it's not necessar, it, it's gonna be variable. In the way that the city has to be able to maintain its servicing of those contracted rates. So the city will get a bill of ten thousand dollars, like we do with hallway services. Here's a bill for ten thousand dollars for this month, and we have to pay that bill to the wholesale provider. The city would then have to say, alright, how much do we, you know, charge the customers in order to pay that, so. It's gonna be variable, but it's still more in the city's control than say, a mud would be. Uh, timelines, how, how fast is all this gonna, kinda work? Takes a while for a mud to be established, few years, you go talk to Walton, talk to them about their mud. It, they're just now getting their wastewater treatment plant, it's taking them a few years to get there. Um, and then they also have the permitting process once you get the mud established. A Pid, we're looking, we probably need about three months to go through a request for proposals for those advisory services. Those, you know, financial advisors, bond counsel, et cetera. Um, take us some time to put those together, then once we have the development agreement in place, and everything is kinda, you know, buttoned up for that. Underwriter for the bond, probably up between the development agreement, the bond getting issued, funny, money coming in. Maybe a hot six months or so. Um, and then you then have the wastewater treatment plant, and then if we can do a regional under a Pid, which is. It's a significant unknown at this point, um, establishing CCNs. Public-private partnership. Put out a request for proposals, award a contract, and you're off and running within a couple of months. So, from that standpoint, it's a lot, lot simpler to get going on that. Just, just a, a different, different way of providing. Um, risks, risk would do nothing. You lose the, the, the potential future expansion, you run into that patchwork of wastewater treatment systems. Pids, um, as you go through the underwriting process. The, it helps your bond outsell better if you have builder contracts already in place. If we get a land, a landowner, developer says, I wanna a Pid, and they don't have a builder contract. There's, there's a DR Horton KB Homes or somebody that's gonna come in and pop homes down behind them, they don't have their contract in place yet. It, it, that doesn't meet the gold standard for these things, um, cause it makes it a little, possibly a little more difficult for a Pid to sell. Uh, bonds sell. We're currently in a, a rising interest rate environment, um, so, that's, that's gonna continue. And so, the, after those coupon rates, interest rates are, are satisfied. The value of those bonds go down, or I guess the, the cost of those bonds go up, which is getting passed on to folks. And then the greatest risk, we kinda touched on it, the complexity of associate with trying to find a way. To maybe organize Pids into a, our single, or very few regional treatment plants. Seems a pretty tough thing to figure out, um, I think even tonight, as, as Tom was talking. Might not even be able to go that route, as, uh, uh, if we go Pids, we might be back in a patchwork, treatment plant systems. All self-contained within those development areas. The private partner, private-public partnership, the rest, it's a long-term contract. Long-term contract, I mean, it's, it's, it's marriage, you're in, you're, you're connected to these people. Like it or not, for a very long time. You're in, you're, you're connected to these people, like it or not, for a very long time.
Are those are those years negotiable?
Maybe, but probably going into it, you probably want to think of it as being a 50-year, 40-year kind of a kind of a thing. Um, and then you could have, through that contract or however it works, those wholesale rates could increase during the life of that contract. And if we don't like it, ain't not much we can do about it. So, um, makes makes it that much important to make, get that contract right upfront. And again, you're you're, you have investors trying to make a profit on this thing. They want to make sure they get a profit. You're you're kind of operating at different interests at that point, you know? So that there's a potential for for conflict and how it all works out. Anyways, that's it. I'm, I, that's my presentation.
Very good.
What?
I really appreciate what you've done.
What's your gut telling you after having this conversation? Is there something that is is is, um, what what's your gut saying on? What what seems to be our our approach that that's attractive to you?
That's an option, you know, we already.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jan, what were you saying?
We we already own a sewage treatment plant.
That's true. That 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 option is the gap. We can, we, that sewage treatment plant, we can probably put another 200 homes on, that's it. The issue we're.
It has one tenth maxed out, it has one tenth of the additional capacity.
What 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 this?
Are we going to lose it if we take one of these two options?
Why would we?
The will still have.
Oh, well, you'll, you can either, you can, I mean, if you are really attached to those ponds, we can keep the ponds there all day long. Whether we use them or not, it's going to be something else. Um, if we want to continue to use those ponds for, you know, the downtown core and things, we could. I'm not sure how economical that will be, given the other investments that's going on. Yeah.
Or we we could sell that land too, if we needed a smaller amount of land to build a more efficient plant.
Or, you know, you could, as part of the the, if we do a a wholesale agreement, we're contract, we could sell that land to them as part of the contract. And for their plant, and that that sale kind of eats down a little bit on our, um, yeah, pays forward a little bit on that.
I like that, I like the last one, but I I'm real concerned about that C C C N permit to bring. I I I want to see, I'd like to see an example of that in the city stuff. I mean, to see that, I mean, it's 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 a really good approach, I like it, but if I like to see it in the real world.
Yeah, you see anything like that? See, regional CCNs for private plants?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could you, can you?
I mean, there's there's one right outside your city limits, Turner Crest, the old Turner Crest piece has has a wastewater C C N on it right now. It's called the JDB Turner Crest C C N. It was done years ago, they do not have a current discharge permit, so I will, but there is a an overlaying C C N. There's a way, an existing wastewater C C N, if you go to the TCU.
What does C C N state?
It's, uh, C C N is conveyance of, no, certificate of conveyance and necessity. Convenience.
They haven't, they haven't, they haven't built a sewer plant.
It's your jurisdiction.
Right, but they they own that C C N.
Because they own it, but.
So so here's what, when when you're considering C C Cs, Jan, this this is what the 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 colors on the screen, those are C CNs. They're service areas.
Describe one, um, that actually has a plant already on it. I think that's what Councilwoman McLeod is asking.
I don't know one immediately off the top of my head, but they absolutely exist across.
I want to see, I want to see examples of it. I want to see in a real world situation.
Is that something?
I I want to see a city our size or some somewhere that that's happened in the past to see. Because I, I mean, I like that approach, because the bottom line is, what the the end result is, we want people to come into our, into our cities.
Yep.
We have to do something to coax them gently to come in too.
Yep.
If we don't do that, it's we're wasting our time.
Can I ask a clarifying question on what you're requesting?
I'm asking if there's, is I want an example of a city of our size or similar that has done the C C N with the with with.
For a large area.
For a large area to bring in to to to.
I guess what my clarifying question is, are you seeking the agreement in the documentation, or you want to get to the actual infrastructure?
I want to see an example of some cities.
A map, a map and a picture of a place.
Okay, that's a difference, okay.
So it like a map, that's a C C N's been.
And a treatment plant.
Yeah, that's servicing that map. Yep.
But but is it, but are you wanting that treatment plant privately owned?
That's a whole, I'm 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 totally flat with.
Private, public, just just.
Yeah, the private-public partnership, the last one.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, well, so I'll I'll, Puker Utility Canada has a wastewater C C N currently for their plant, the the plant that's over there.
And where's that located?
Off of 21 and Yulin.
In Yulin.
Yeah, yes, existing plant, they established a wastewater C C N, a little service area. When was the plant built?
Two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen was when the plant was built, and they've overlaid the C C N that'll be issued by TCU. And they now they've gone to ruin.
Okay, is it, my question, is it working?
Yeah, that's the plant you went and toured.
Okay, but I'm saying that that is.
Is it work, is it working to in to entice, encourage annexation in development agreements? I think the difference in that one is it's a sud because it's not, it's not a city.
In the case of Yulin, because the city doesn't own the utilities, and sud does, the city cannot force a developer to come in and annex.
That's a maybe-dollar question.
In Yulin's case, you own the wastewater treatment system, and so if you establish a C C N over your city.
I want it, I want a firm example of that, if we are whatever, oh.
The city of San Marcos has a C C N over their city limits and portions of their ETJ that mandates that a developer comes to the city in order to get.
But they have a tr- they have a regional plan.
And they have a regional.
Because they have have, they have spent millions and millions of dollars, a big city, we're smaller, I'm just, I, well, you know, that's what I'm saying. I'm asking if there's a similar situation, I know Yulin's similar, but I want to know a similar situation where the C C C N, where they can find that they have were successful with encouraging people to come from their ETJ into their city lines.
That is the whole point of C C N, it's called a certificate of conveyance.
I want an example of the city that's done.
So so let's do, let's do this. Um, we'll look at it. We'll look at it. I I and and I think that's something that would apply also to public improvement districts potentially. But, you know, where where a a municipal-provided sewer system, a sewer, the wastewater C C N is used as a tool in development agreements, we'll find one, they're, they got to be out there. Well, I mean, the 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 alternative is you're you're either doing, you're either getting that C C N or you're not. But if you're not, what are you, what are you doing, are you back in the do-nothing calling?
I'm 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 against the do-nothing.
Okay.
I I like that, I like it, but I want to see, I miss this discussion, but I want to see that an example of that, that it's actually worked. Because I have concerns about those people coming in, even, I mean, I want to see an example of it.
So so the.
If it actually works, it by doing that, they they came in.
Annexation.
From the city, from the city itself, you want to see.
I want to see this work for a small city, that they came, they came in, they, let me speak, they come from the ETJ into our city limits. I will see, I want to see the success rate of it, that's what I want to know.
You using the wastewater.
You following what I'm saying, you following what I'm saying? I will see now, that that last phrase. That's what I want to find out.
As far as the guarantee goes, though, I want to speak to just the C C N in and of itself. By creating the C C N, that is your authority to mandate that they come to you for wastewater service. So when you have that boundary established over the city and you are the service provider, that is, they're obligated to come to you first and foremost. If you cannot provide that service as the C C N holder, then they can go out. By state law, because you hold the C C N, they first and foremost have to come to you. Now, that's the C C N, that's an overlaying one jurisdictional kind of regulatory authority you'll have. The secondary and biggest benefit you have is you own the existing lines and an existing facility today. And your ordinances can mandate that if you own the facility and you have the C C N, that they have to come to you. That's where in the case of Yulin and what I was trying to struggle, I've been struggling with this, Yulin doesn't own any of the utilities, but just like Steve just pointed out, they don't own the water system either, just like y'all don't own the water system. Max, or Mardi Gras Supply Corporation has the water C C N over Martindale and over the service area.
But they have a functioning, full-functioning water system with dual water towers, with water lines. We've got a antiquated evaporation pump.
And that's where your secondary.
So we got to spend a lot of money to get to that point.
Yes.
I mean, I I just got to, I got to see.
Martindale's probably going to have to spend a little money too. Martindale's probably going to have to spend a little money.
That's exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So the water.
Let me ask a question, can a C C N extend beyond the the ETJ? So a C C N can exist like the Martindale Water Supply Corporation doesn't respect the city ETJ. Ours was established by the Public Utility Commission. And so that area is, we have the first right of refusal. So anyone that comes into our district, they have to play ball with us. So could this be utilized to form a regional concept where you unite all these developments into one C C N?
Possible. That is, that is exactly the the path, it should be your path of least resistance, probably, right?
I got to say that a lot, I got to say that. I mean, I got to, okay, that's, I like it, I do like, I do like.
So to extend that conversation a little bit, to some degree, Martindale, uh, Water Supply Corp's water system has the same challenges as the sewer system. They have a limited system.
They have a limited.
As as development comes, you know, they've got to provide water, pipes, the whole thing. So so they've got to go through a a growth avenue as well. So the, but that's their problem, not yours. But they're kind of in it to get, I think that's what they're saying.
I agree, but hit, Steve, if I'm wrong here, he has the infrastructure already. Well, I mean, well, he has to put water lines list, I'm going to say, he has the basic water, the structure. It's just about how much water do you have? When you pass your basic infrastructure, it's just smaller. Yeah, but you, you got.
You don't, you don't, you don't need to put pipes all over your C C N upfront. What you're saying is, I put a C C N here, you do something here, and you say, hey, I want sewer system, sewer. All right, that's where Lance's pipe to get to you.
He's got to grow his system too.
Well, but but we have to grow ours, ours more, we have ours more and plenty.
Both of you face a similar challenge. Uh, uh, you have the added, uh, want and desire of getting people to come into the city. He doesn't care about that.
Yeah, that's where Water Supply Corporation is part of the city, this problem is lots, it's more simple. That's really big. But without that, doing whatever we can to get that type of jurisdictional boundary for providing services is only going to help us achieve.
I totally, I'm I'm totally in agreement with it, I just, I want to.
I I think one of the things we can do, um, is I I don't want to, um, bias our decision-making in any way, but we could reach out to those who have made applications, see, hey, if we had a contract for a wholesale provider, would you full annex in? And say if they say yes. If we did a public improvement district, would you annex it? If they say yes, I know, we're, it's a tight, small sample size, I don't want to just go with what's there now, but we see what their impact is. But I don't want to tail wagging the dog. I'd rather be the 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 council members at this table and the one on the phone, if she's still there, um, to wag the tail a little bit. Tell me, where where do you want, when 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 we're sitting down with these developers and it's, they've submitted applications, they've paid deposits, it's time to start negotiating the timing of some of the details. You know, our our priority is, all right, how do we get you to annex in? What, all right, what services can you provide them? Well, uh, use the police and waste, solid waste services and, okay, what's your wastewater capacity? Eighty-five, you know, like, um, I need to be able to tell them something better than we have eighty-five. I want to be able to say, we're still looking at things, but right now, the direction that we're going in is X. That's kind of what I'm looking for from the council.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and move on to five A, direct city staff to pursue one or more available course of action to meet infrastructure demands as it relates to current and future development agreement applications. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this so, uh, we can absorb some of this, I haven't even swallowed yet.
Okay, there's a motion on, Jamel is there?
Y'all don't have to accept it.
Ready, ready to get, ready to get.
Yeah, direct city staff to pursue one or more available course of action to meet infrastructure demands as it relates to current and future development agreement applications.
One or more.
One or more.
You're you're directing staff to look at.
All these options, all these options, basically.
Do you want to restate?
You don't want to.
We're we're more efficient.
I want it to do nothing.
Yeah, we're more efficient if it's one.
But we can do, we can do two, definitely.
Uh, public, the PID and the P P P, I think those two are the best options. I'd make make a motion then.
Well, let me, let me decline mine, well, I guess, since nobody accepted it.
Well, I'm saying refuse the do-nothing method and go for the other two.
Yes, okay.
That's.
Make a motion, Mr. Plank.
Uh, that's, that's my motion that I make, that we pursue the PID and the P P P and not go with the do-nothing. Anyone else?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, any more discussion? Okay, so i- if you approve, please say aye. Okay, so the motion carries, and I have one more question. Please, let's. No, just, I have a question. Yeah, I did, I said, but you made the motion and you seconded it, so, and so she sat out. So it carries. Your question, okay, my question is, can we schedule a meeting to talk about who we want to be police chief? Either Friday night or Saturday morning?
What time Friday night?
Saturday during the day.
And still get it on the agenda.
How about, we record six Wednesday?
What's the deadline?
Wednesday about twenty-four hours, maybe thirty in the morning.
Saturday?
No, 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 it's Tuesday.
Today's Tuesday.
No, 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 if for for next Tuesday.
You can do Saturday and start.
Fourth would be twenty-four, the third would be forty-eight, the second would be seventy-two, what's the date on the second?
If it's posted by Saturday night.
I don't know if that's.
Three days.
But if you wanted to do it on Friday or Saturday, you could even send out an email that said, here's your three options, respond for now.
Oh, I see, yes, we could do a Saturday, we could do a Saturday morning.
Can you do a Saturday morning?
What's better for you, Friday or Saturday?
Friday night or Saturday morning?
Wait a minute, what, how many hours do we need? Oh, okay, so.
Probably Friday night, if I had a choice, but, um.
Friday night sounds.
You don't, you can zoom in, you don't have to come in.
Have a weekend.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think it would be, uh, be overly long conversation.
No, I don't think it'll be long at all. I hope not.
Okay, so you have everybody send you the. Okay, so, you have everybody send you the.
I think y'all just made a decision.
Yeah.
No, we.
Friday night.
Yeah, do we have?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Seven hours, forty-eight, yeah, we, no, that'd be, we'd always have to do it, we'd have to do it Saturday morning. Otherwise, we're having the meeting at ten o'clock and nine.
Okay, Saturday morning.
Again, like I said, the legislature hates cities.
Nine AM or ten AM?
Nine AM would be preferred.
It's Saturday morning, nine AM.
You're the one that's from out of town, so. Well, but you're gonna zoom in, so, right?
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I have, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.